I'm going to call to order the November 2nd, 2017 Issaquah City Council Land and Shore Committee. Welcome, everybody. We have almost a full house. We have a lot on our agenda tonight, so I just want to let everybody know that after most of the items tonight, with the exception of the moratorium update, I will allow public comment. Because we have a lot on our agenda, I will say upfront that I will probably allow three minutes each for comments. And usually the most we allow is five, even at full council meetings, so we're not really cutting it back much, we're just trying to manage our meetings. Well, the first item is, I'm the chair, Stacey Goodman, and to my right, Mary Lou Polly and Paul Winterstein. First item, moratorium update, presented by Keith Niven, Economic and Development Services Director.
Thank you. So I gave you guys an update on this Monday night during the budget workshop, and so I'm not going to spend much time. Nothing has changed since Monday, I don't think. So for everybody else here who might be interested in the moratorium, where we are, this is a little bit outdated. I probably could have updated this today, my apologies. So where we are with architecture and urban design, it's back on the agenda this evening. The hope is that the committee finishes deliberation on this and moves it back to the full council for the first meeting, or for the, are we hoping for the November or December meeting?
November.
For the November 20th council meeting. Parking is finished. Tonight, you're going to get the first conversation about inclusionary zoning and the proposed changes to the code that would come with looking at increasing our inclusionary requirements. MFTE is coming next committee meeting, or no, actually, it's going to services. So MFTE is going to services, my apologies. Vertical mixed use is finished, and then visions. Next, we're having, next week, we're going to have a field tour with Planning Policy Commission to go look at the neighborhoods. And there's two Planning Policy Commission meetings scheduled for November, and then we will be back to land and shore in December with updated visions. So that's the moratorium update.
I only had one question, that is, I saw the proposed times for the PPC hours, and one of them, they both start at four. I think there was an indication that that might be inconvenient for those members who work, so I'm only hoping that everybody has an opportunity to attend.
Yeah, we balanced, you know, this time of year, it's really hard since it's dark out at four, or getting close to being dark out at four, so we tried to push it as late in the day as possible, yet not have it so dark we can't see anything, so, yeah.
Actually, I think it's so important, Keith, that, I'm wondering why a Saturday wasn't included, because what we're talking about is character defining for large areas, large neighborhoods, and I think anybody on PPC who is giving of their time, why not a Saturday too?
Okay. So I cherish my Saturdays, but let me look and see what the responses we got back on the two times.
We have seven of the members already.
All right, so maybe what we'll do, what we could also do is reach out to those who couldn't make the two four to sixes, and see if there's another either day or time that would work for them. I agree with you, I think it's super important, but maybe we can tailor some times and days to work.
That's great, thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda, Agenda Bill 7459, termination of Costco easement.
So this one had worked its way through committee, and to remind the committee what we were talking about is, these are the existing, here's the Pickering Barn for orientation, and this is the Costco parking garage, and this is what they call the trade building, and this is a surface parking lot at the south end. This is Issaquah Creek that runs, is that east-west?
North-south.
North-south? Oh my gosh, sorry. And this dash line represents the existing Pickering Trail. This diagram on the left shows an easement that was recorded with the original master site plan, and the purpose for the easement was to get a public trail. And the public trail was intended to parallel Issaquah Creek, and that trail is out there today. When we had previous conversations at committee, it was believed that that trail was completely on city-owned property. However, as you can see, as you look at the very north end of Costco's property, this is their parking garage, here's the trail, and you can see these orange lines are the property lines. And as you can see from just an aerial photograph, there is this funky little triangle piece at the north end of Costco's property. If the property line went straight, there'd be no issues with proximity to the trail, but we've got this little notch here at the north end. And when Costco did a survey, what they found was that, yes, indeed, the trail actually does clip the corner of Costco's property. And so you can see that here in green, and what Costco has proposed is to retain the portion of easement R on their property that would be consistent with this red triangle that we're seeing here at the north end. But for the rest of the property, the easement would be terminated. So that's a new piece of information. This is why this came back to committee, to talk about that detail, because that is different than the way we described this earlier, and my apologies for the lack of accurate information previously. But that is, I'm going to stop here. I know Rich Olin from Costco would like to say a few words to the committee if, when you are ready for that, and now might be a good time. I don't even know where Rich went.
Hi.
Hi, Rich, you're too close, sorry. So I don't know if you want Costco to say a few words at this time, or if you guys want to ask some questions, either way, I can.
I have a question. Okay. Good evening, nice to be back. Thank you for taking the additional time tonight to consider the new information about Costco's request to eliminate the easement R on our property. I'd like to give you background about what happened here, because when we were here last, we had some information for you, it turns out not to be correct. I want you to understand what happened, okay? So when you voted to recommend the removal of easement R from Costco's property as we had requested, and thank you for that, that evening, there were three key members of our development team here with you. We had Jackie Frank, Costco's Vice President of Development, we had Patrick Mulaney, our outside land use council, and me. And at that time, we all thought, without any question at all, that the trail was not on the Costco property, so that's why we told you the trail was not on the Costco property. But soon after that meeting, when we went back to start to work with our consultants on the exhibits for the agreement that we would enter into with the city, assuming that, hopefully, the count that you would then follow through, the council would recommend and then vote to eliminate the easement from our property, we discovered that, to our great surprise, that there was what Keith had described here. I immediately contacted Keith to let him know, to disclose that, but the three of us were quite surprised that this was the case. I wanted to tell you what we have been able to piece together as to why it is that we thought it was not on our property. There were two main reasons. First reason is, you may recall from the initial packet that Patrick put together, sent to the city, was provided to you, there was a copy of the letter that Eva, the mayor, Frisner, wrote to me in 1999, and she said a few things in there, but if you don't mind, if I could just take a moment to quote the important part of that letter as it relates to this, this is a quote directly taken from the letter. As we discussed, this is the letter from the mayor to me, "As we discuss, the trail will be located in an area known as Track A, adjacent to the eastern lots in the Pickering Place Development owned by Costco. The trail will only come out of the easement at the three lots owned by the city, known as barn lots six through eight. Therefore, Pickering Place Trail will not be located on the Costco lots." So we all thought, the city said they were not putting it on lots, on our lots, so it wouldn't be there. And then, secondly, we've all looked at this piece of property many, many times, and as Keith has pointed out, if you go out there and you stand on that property, you wouldn't know that this was Costco property. Indeed, not only is there this little notch on our property which causes it to be, look like it's not on Costco property, but whatever survey markers should have been there, or might have been there at one time, or whatever, were not there, were not visible, so you couldn't figure out standing there either. So it would make sense, it would have made perfect sense to whoever's doing this, if they didn't have the calls and survey, that they would have figured it was a straight line, and they were putting the trail exactly where they had intended on Track A. So our conclusion was, the city quite innocently, totally inadvertently, put this triangle piece on our property. So that's how we found out, and that's why we didn't have the accurate information for you. Now, Costco is perfectly fine, despite what the mayor said, we're perfectly fine with that portion of the trail being on our property. We don't have a problem, we don't have a problem with that. And fortunately, the staff, Keith and Costco, have figured out a very simple way to deal with this issue, which is, you've previously voted to recommend to the council elimination of all of easement R. What we're proposing now is, instead of that, is that eliminate all of easement R from the Costco property, with the exception of the area that Keith pointed out, and that's that area in red. And that would include the portion of the trail that is on our property, and a buffer area, which is similar to the buffer area that runs south of that, which is on Track A, so that it would all, then it all makes sense, and the trail would be nice and straight, exactly where it is. So we hope you agree with that, and we would ask that if you do, that you would please, once again, approve our requests, and then to go, to bring it forward to the council to do as we have just suggested. Two loose ends, just to mention, when we were here last, we talked about Costco's contribution to the city of the additional $20,000. We have since that time provided a letter to Keith to confirm that. And secondly, in order to formalize all this, if hopefully the council were to, you were to recommend to the council, and the council were to approve, that there would be an agreement between Costco and the city to memorialize all this. We have drafted that agreement, provided it to Keith and the city attorney. It's my understanding, based on their input, that they have approved the agreement as well, so all those housekeeping issues, housekeeping with respect to the document, I should say, have been taken care of. So, any questions for me? Okay, thank you again.
Do you have anybody in the, did you have something to say, Paul? I was going to ask for public. Anybody would like to make a comment? Public? No? None? Okay. So I'm assuming they're all in agreement to move it forward, only because we were last time.
And I appreciate the candor and the explanation. Almost wasn't needed, but I appreciated it very much. I appreciated cleaning it up, and the language that I have, I'm okay with the language as proposed.
Yep, I think it's great, and I think it's nice to hear that all the steps have been taken, so that when it's at council, it's very, very easy to explain. The intention of making sure that that easement is still there where it needed to be for the trail, and that that connection is clearly going to be public forever, is exactly what I was hoping for, so this is great.
I agree with all of that, and the only, the last question I have for you two is regular or consent? We chatted briefly in leadership about the possibility of consent, and then, of course, any council member can bring it down.
The past practice, have we done?
It's just really at the discretion of the committee.
I don't have a strong feeling on it.
I don't either, I'm fine with consent.
I am too. All right, let's try that.
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Next item, Agenda Bill 7493, Lake Semamish State Park Partnering Agreement.
And in keeping with my previous partnering effort, I'm going to partner with state parks on this presentation. So you guys are getting this for the first time, Agenda Bill 7493. It is a request from the state parks for the city to do two things. One, entertain a development agreement for the state park, but also to partner with them in the funding of the environmental impact statement that would be necessary for that agreement. What we're talking about is, you know, it is, so obviously, the main part of the state park, we're talking about Greenwood Trust, which the city owns. This is Hans Jensen over here. This is actually DNR-owned, I think. Do you guys own that?
It's ours.
It's yours, oh, sweet. You know, I did not include, this is actually owned by EFR right now, so this is the property that was purchased last year. It could be included, might not be included, right now it's not.
EFR didn't purchase it, they did.
Right, yes, we did, sorry. Technically, we did with fire mitigation monies, sorry.
Not technically, we did.
We really did.
Approximately 530 acres. What we've talked about so far, in terms of what we would include in a potential development agreement, this is like a really long laundry list of things. Number of, most of these things, and Peter may tell me all of these things, are in the 2007 master plan, but we have talked about some other things. And this is really an opportunity, I think, to bring the 2007 plan, which is now obviously 10 years old, kind of current. And one of the biggest things that we've talked about is whether or not we can relocate the entrance to the state park from where it is now, which is kind of an odd mid-block entrance, to something closer to the intersection of 12th and 56th. So, you know, right now, this is our first conversation, so, you know, kind of putting up some questions for you all to think about. Why partner with state parks? Why put local money into a state facility? What happens if the city doesn't financially contribute? And why now? So those are some, I think, prime questions that are going to want to be part of our dialogue as we move this forward. The time sensitivity piece, and this will be the last thing I say, and I'll let Peter go next, is really, because you guys are in just starting your budget deliberations and conversations, the request for the $250,000 for the city contribution is not part of the mayor's budget. The request from state parks actually came in after. So this is really providing at least three of you guys with some context for that ask, and whether or not you ultimately decide to include it in the 2018 budget or not, that's probably going to run on a parallel track to this conversation about whether we enter into a development agreement, and whether we are a funding partner to the EIS with state parks. So with that, I'm going to, if you guys are okay, I'm going to step aside and let Peter say a few things.
Thanks, Keith. Thanks, good introduction, thank you very much. I think this group is very familiar with Lake Semamish State Park, the 2007 plan, the vision that's been adopted for the plan of a place of urban engagement in natural areas, bringing people into the natural world, bringing them to do things that they do anyway, going to the beach, having fun, playing soccer, these kinds of things that we know in the park, but also then taking it to the next step, and engaging them in a learning experience about the natural world, and then putting them in closer contact with natural features of the park, and creating what we call a play, learn, serve mentality for the park. That vision has been supported for a long time. After adopting that, it was 2008, which really killed a whole bunch of momentum in the project, and really wasn't until 2012 when the city actually approached us about partnerships with, between the city and state parks, to look at ways we can improve the park, ways we can jumpstart things and get things going again. That led us to signing an MOU, and a partnership agreement at that time. We've been working under that ever since. It's been a wild ride here for the last few years, we've got quite a bit of development done, and a lot of restoration done at the same time. Thing I want to point out is that the 2007 plan was a redevelopment and restoration plan, which was really talking about not just the built environment, but really, what do we do to restore the natural systems too? Since that time now, we've got this development done of the beaches, and lots of the development with the bathhouse, and Nikki's here to, she's going to hopefully say a few words about what we've been doing, what we got in store for development side. A lot of activity, and so now, we, the main part was, let's get Sunset Beach done, and then now the question is, now that we're basically there, we've had quite a bit of success there, what's next? Stakeholders have joined us in looking and asking the same question, so there's big plan out there, and a lot of things on that list that he said there, what do we do next? The best way to evaluate that is now in a refreshing, or a freshening up of the plan, the 2007 plan, looking at some of these options, looking at other ideas people have had, testing the ideas that are already adopted, and doing that within the context of an EIS, so that we're really looking at, on the development side, what it is that we want to do, doing a process to evaluate new ideas and affirm the old ideas, and then making sure that that's moving ahead in concert with natural area restoration. The idea being, matching up some of the mitigation that will be required for those projects, and traffic, wetlands, and other things, impervious surfaces, and using that as a principal mechanism for funding the restoration side of the equation. So we're here with our hand open, our state parks has committed about $300,000 to this EIS process, and the development agreement process, but we can't do it alone. We don't have enough money to do everything, and we feel it's hopefully something that'll be well-received by the city, and an appropriate partnership to continue on, and join together in doing this EIS and the development agreement together, with close to about the same amount of investment in the process, and then make sure that this whole thing results in benefits to both the city and state parks as we move it forward. So we feel that the partnership has been great so far, and we're wanting to take it to the next step. So I'll ask Nikki now, if there's any questions for me, I can ask those after, but Nikki can update us on what's happening in development in the park.
So I'm just going to go backwards a little bit, very briefly. I think a lot of you know this, is that in 2009, we started our first projects to revitalize the park, and the first one was actually a shoreline restoration project, so we started with the restoration side of things. Then we went in and did the new boardwalk that is in that same area as the shoreline project. We followed that with the bathhouse at Sunset Beach, and then the new playground, which has really brought in a lot of new visitors and revitalized that part of the park. And then just this last summer, we finished the beach restoration work. And so those are what we have behind us. We have funding now to do a dock at the beach, kind of on one side of the swim area of the beach. And we applied for and scored high to get a grant, and also some capital funding from the state legislature to redo the picnic area, all right there next to the bathhouse. And so that's over $5 million, combining both those two sources of money. The state doesn't have a capital budget right now, so we don't have it. It scored really high, we're very hopeful that should the state decide to pass a capital budget, we will then be able to move forward into design of that picnic area as well. So that means that almost everything in the Sunset Beach area is done, and we have to start thinking about what our next steps are.
To, I guess, me? I remember when state actually came to the development commission with that plan, and how much time we spent looking at it, and it's really exciting. So now to see it, you know, getting a new life with all the work done the last few years is pretty cool. From a city point of view, the area, our area, our town also has plans to change in that area. So I love the fact that you started with policy questions, I would throw a few more up there. How does this integrate with the central Issaquah plan, with the potential sound transit light rail station, and with work on I-90, and any sort of King County metro projects that might provide transportation? And I put them up there because when I picture the park, and I picture the surface parking, I imagine the surface parking within the park could be used for many different things besides cars, and that there's the potential to combine some urban elements at the edges that may allow parking and transit to be incorporated in a more urban way, and free up more parkland for the wonderful list of amenities that they're talking about. So that's, those are kind of some things I'd like to add to your list of for questions, but that's a great start, Keith. I love it when you start with the policy questions.
I have a technical question, it's really boring. So it's about doing an EIS.
Okay.
So usually when you do an EIS, you have some parameters?
Scoping, yes.
Scoping, yes. And so if we don't know what we might do, I mean, we just have a list of maybes, how do we do an EIS at this point?
So it would be, it would most likely be probably more in line with, say, like the planned action EIS for central Issaquah, and less like the Rowley EIS where it was for a specific project. So think about it in terms of doing traffic modeling, and figuring out how many trips the state park can basically hold before major transportation improvements need to be, you know, constructed. And so you start to develop these kind of benchmarks where you can make decisions, so maybe something like turning the existing soccer fields into all-weather fields with lights, you know, that might be scoping for things like, besides traffic, stormwater, and maybe impacts on nocturnal mammals. So you start to, I think from the list of, that was a Kenmore reference, sorry, that was from, the things that I think we know about, you can start to build, I think, some thresholds with which then you can make some decisions, and the parks, state parks could then make some decisions in terms of, if they know they want to work with, say, Issaquah Soccer on turning the fields into all-weather fields, that's going to eat up a certain number of trips, and eat up a certain number of acreage, and generate so much stormwater and light impacts and everything else. So I think you can start to put the puzzle together that way, but it will create these buckets which then they can choose to pick projects out of, and as long as it doesn't exceed what's in the bucket, you know, you would be, you still have to do additional SEPA review, but it's much more streamlined.
Okay, just wanted to be clear. And then there's a, I think there's, the Agenda Bill talks about both a partnering agreement and a development agreement. So can you, what does this Agenda Bill specifically propose?
So this Agenda Bill, so typically when we are asked to work on a development agreement, we send those requests through the council because it's such a commitment of staff resources. You know, as much as applicants would like to think you can put one of those development agreements together in three months, they almost all take about a year to negotiate. And so it's about a year commitment of staff time, and so generally, we like the council to understand and make that commitment of administration resources before we start spending a bunch of time working on that. The partnering agreement is the financial partnering agreement in terms of spelling out the details for, you know, if the city were to participate in the funding of the EIS, you know, we have to work out which parts
EIS, you know, we have to work out which parts do we want to pay for, because there's a number of consultant studies. For example, one of the things that's attached is a scope from CH2M Hill to do the traffic modeling. Since that's our consultant, it may make sense for that contract to be done through the city. But we would, I think, divide the pieces up depending on the council's tolerance for willing to partner financially on this. And that would be the partnering agreement.
And so for the development agreement, is it envisioned that that would be between the city and state parks?
Yes.
Okay.
Keith, I'm gonna ask you about your first question up there. And, you know, I can maybe put some words in your mouth or suggest, but I'd like to hear from you why. What tangible benefits do you see or potentially see at this point in partnering? And I think by partnering, I think what you're really saying is in the sharing of the cost and the cost burden, both the EIS and then the traffic analysis. So, is otherwise, we would just be performing regular, or development, DA services. What's the benefit?
So the benefit is, I think there's two pieces. One is, and I actually would expand, even though maybe I was leading with my partnering work. So, we have, actually Costco's gone, but we have a number of partners that are in this room, you know, the Rowleys and Costco, where we have partnered on a development agreement. And what you get with that partnership is you get trust and you get a lot of goodwill. And it's a relationship-building exercise that actually leads to benefits that oftentimes we don't realize when we start those efforts. And so, that part, I think, is, needs to be at least stated. Other than that, though, what I think you heard from state parks is they do not believe, they do not have enough capital to do an EIS. And so, if they can't find a funding partner, and we're the logical one, given the fact that this is our community and we would benefit from this as much as they would in different ways, though, that this would go on hold. I don't think it would move forward without the city's financial assistance.
Is that it?
I think so.
So often in a DA, there's something, because something is gonna be asked to be, that would otherwise can't be done right now. And also, I want, for later reference, I noticed in the map you put up there, you did not put the zoning. I know that not, I think many of those parcels, if maybe one of them is actually CFF or CFR, I may be wrong, but I know a lot of it is open space. So I'm kind of assume if anything's done, I don't know if you're gonna be talking about any type of zoning or type of changes. But there's some benefit to the city when we go into a DA. We're gonna get something that we otherwise wouldn't get. Now, obviously, if they, we win if they win. I'm not discounting that at all. But are you foreseeing something beyond just an even better park?
So, I would call a friend at this point. And I would ask Jeff, if he doesn't mind, talking about, because I think right now we're going through a park plan. And I think, you know, it's hard to, it's hard for us not to look at sharing toys at this point. And so, and Jeff, if you want to go back to a map, you can, just by hitting the back button a couple times if you would rather?
The map isn't super critical for later on. I just, I want the higher level conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think from a, recognizing this amazing asset of public land and that we have a partner who manages that land and state parks, and as we manage our land as a city, I think the benefit of partnering is realizing where, and the park strategic plan is certainly bearing this out, that public property and our interest and, quite frankly, opportunity to create some local park elements into that space. Local meaning really serving, I think, serving more as an urban park space than what state parks managers, manages their space at. We have this opportunity to, if you will, have this asset serve and benefit and feel as it's part of our city park system, though it's managed by another partner. And how do we sort of lean on each other's strengths as stewards of local park systems and stewards of state park systems? How might this reap a better benefit and a more integrated benefit of that public land?
Okay, so it's all conceptual right now?
Yes.
Definitely comments worth exploring further. I mean, that's, yeah, urban park amenities. I mean, I don't, okay. Okay, so benefit, you know, so we're talking, I can pass for now. Want to talk about all those questions eventually, but that's good for now.
Go ahead.
Well, let's talk about the money, then. Let's ask that question. So that's what I was trying to get at. What's, you know, typically, and don't get me wrong, right? A better park and whatever those amenities are, how they're in harmony with their goals, with our goals, and how we envision ourselves of the city in the future, also meeting, you know, those land preservation, restoration goals, I mean, all of that, that's a great, is a wonderful benefit. And, so you're asking the question, why put local money? Is that they, I think the answer that you're telling us is, is they can't achieve it without our assistance.
Yes. That is, that is what I'm saying. You know, and I think the other piece that's important here, and Nikki gave a little bit of information in terms of the appropriations that are being made in Olympia. I mean, I think one of the things that is of value is looking to, how can you leverage some local dollars for greater local benefit? You know, we do that with traffic projects all the time, you know? How do, you know, if we've got a dollar and we can get, you know, five out of the TIB, you know, that's a good, that's a good use of our money. I think here locally, given the amount of investment that's come into Lake Simamish State Park over the past few years, you know, that, if we potentially put that money, that local money in, and we can get the plan updated, the EIS done, it will continue allowing state parks to work with Olympia to get bigger state contributions to the local park. So, I think there's that piece. Obviously, that's a, you know, goodwill and a hopeful maybe possibly, but, you know, we do those things all the time, I think.
So, we've had one, two, and three answered. Why put local money in? What happens if it doesn't financially, if we don't financially contribute? And the answer was, you didn't think the project would go forward. But why now?
So it's a great question, and maybe Peter or Nikki might be better in terms of the time sensitivity. And I know, I know there's some money that you guys have in your budget, and I don't know if that's at risk or in jeopardy, but if there's a time sensitivity piece, I'm busy, so I, but yeah, I'm just kidding.
I want to back up half a step maybe and talk about the benefit a little bit more. I mean, the answer is also money. I mean, we have, what we're doing there is community events, things like AVP, the volleyball tournament, which generates revenue for the city directly. And so, we as a state park system have kind of, as we have gone through the 2008 transformation process, have said, we are amenable to working with cities and local municipalities to do things that are compatible with one another, providing local amenities that are compatible, which is not to say that we're just now turning it into a city park, but where that we can do things in concert with one another and achieve mutual benefits that don't conflict with one another. That's really where, where God is, right? So that's where the synergy really happens. And so, so we're talking directly about providing land and space for local amenities that you wouldn't otherwise have. So that's another significant benefit of partnering together. In terms of the timing, what's critical about this is that we do have funds and we do have momentum. Momentum is everything. And so we have been now just building upon a significant surge in development, and now $5 million of additional state funds that are being poised to be put into this place. And we can continue to move forward, but we can't move forward as efficiently or as productively without an EIS, where everything is piecemealed, and we cannot then also move forward with the other piece of the equation, which is the restoration side. So those are very critical things, points for us, and I think benefits to the city that will accrue directly as a result of this.
And I think one of the points, Peter, I love the word momentum, because before we executed our first MOU with the state park, the general perception in this community is nothing had been done in that park since the '70s. And that most people said, I don't go there anymore. I used to go there, but I'm not, I haven't gone there recently. And so, what has changed? A lot has changed. And that momentum and that energy is, and the Friends Group, I mean, all those things have been great kind of pivots for us, I think.
Just going back to the why now question is, we've committed to spending $300,000 here toward an EIS, but I just got a call today from our budget office saying, are you really gonna be spending this? Because we have staff that need to be paid for and other things that we could be using this for in our system. So, I don't know how much longer I can keep pushing them off, but eventually, they're gonna want to take that money and use it for something else. So, we do have a window where we can still start investing that into Lake Simamish.
All right. Thank you. I want to know that planning a future based upon momentum from the legislature out of Olympia is probably not good planning. It's one thing to have people and individuals like on your commission with kind of a goal, but when, and a purpose, but when it comes to legislative decision about capital and what that, that's, I can, who knows? But I understand, but really banking on that, I think, would be, we should just be cautious about that. For clarification, so in the packet, on this one-page request for a development agreement, it does reference something called the Lake Simamish Redevelopment and Restoration Concept Plan. Is that the 2007 plan you're referring to? It seems that there is an assumption that a development agreement would use that existing plan as the basis.
Yes. So we'll use that definitely as the starting point for conversations and testing the community's interests. I think, you know, part of this is clearly there's gonna be a big community outreach in terms of, you know, we have a list of things that we want to talk about and prioritize, but getting kind of the community's take on that, an updated community take on that, because that was a community process that established that 2007 plan.
Right. And I think Peter even made reference to this. Things have changed since then, right? Some things have been done, and now there are other ideas, and the built environment around the park has changed. So, and those are potentially pretty large factors for change. So what's the ask in front of us this evening?
So the ask, the Agenda Bill is looking for the council to direct the administration to start working on a development agreement with state parks. And then, if you saw fit, it would also be to amend the proposed budget to include the $250,000 for calendar year 2018.
And execute the partnering agreement.
Yes, thank you.
Do you think that would be funded?
We would need to talk to finance about that piece. I don't know the answer to that. Public comment?
Yeah, public comment. We have some folks who would like to speak, and I'll just remind the people who weren't here earlier, we're allowing three minutes per person for public comment. Jim?
Hi, Ted. Your Aunt Naaman. I'm Jim Berry. I'm on the board of the Friends Lake Simamish State Park, as I think you all know. We had, we think we've had phenomenal success in the four years since we were formed. And it shows. I'd have to ask exactly what our visitor count is, but I think it's double this year over what it was two years ago or three years ago, vistas, indicated by discover passes both daily and annual that are sold at the park and other things like that. And, you know, I was there last Sunday, I think, and the playground was just packed. And it's fun. And I grew up at the park, and it had become kind of what Keith described as, you know, I knew families that just wouldn't take their kids there. And so, we're excited. We did, as was mentioned, get a couple million this last, in this last B&amp;Ms budget for the docks and the more or less final touches to the Sunset Beach area. Hopefully shortly, in the next couple of months, the capital budget will get passed, and that'll be, we had asked our representatives and others to include somewhere, and we kind of pushed and shoved for this $250,000, and we got a few million, but we didn't get this last $250,000, you know, recognized. We, as a Friends Group, think this is the critical next step for the continuing on where we are, and we're excited about where it's going. So, you know, to me, as a citizen, even though I don't live in the city of Issaquah, I still consider Issaquah my home, you know, I look at this as much as a city park as I do a state park. And I, and, you know, what can still be accomplished there to make this an economic driver for the city and a benefit to the regional? We keep trying. We do, we do get money from Simamish every year to the Friends Group. We keep trying. Bellevue and King County, oh, we did get $50,000 from King County for the playground, and the $250,000 we raised for that. But, you know, we're trying, and this is just, this is the next, and I'd hate to see, and I know, without Nikki saying it, that they get people saying, you know, we need this money, because we've had it happen before, in other, in the last four years, that, you know, time is somewhat of the essence. You know, we may, you know, 1919, or 2019, get the 250, but, you know, where, how much things will have shifted by then, who knows? So I'd appreciate you guys giving this full consideration.
Thanks, Jim.
Any questions of us? There are a few more upstairs.
Anybody else?
I would just like to say I've been using the state park since 1978. My very first 10K, and I think the first one for the city of Issaquah, was at that park. Triathlons and all the other things, swimming, biking, and running. And now I'm blessed to have five grandchildren, and we love the new play facility. It's unbelievable. And there were some very dark days when that park was really in a bad way, and it was this incredible opportunity. And I would just like to acknowledge all the work that the state has done. It's just fabulous, and the city. And it is a jewel, and it's something that I think is a very significant benefit to the city. The volleyball tournament program is just amazing, how far that reaches out, and it does help the city, and it also is a great, something great for all of our kids in the community. So I would just like to say thanks for all the work that everyone has done, and I think the partnership idea is a very good one, and a collaborative effort to make it better is, we all win. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. David?
For the cooler eight months of the year, it's pretty much a city park. And for the warmer times of the year, it's a city park, Monday through Friday, and on the weekends, we share with the region. It's a huge benefit to the city, and we're certainly should be contributing to that. And it'll continue to be a huge resource for the city. It's just great. My grandkids love it. I love going over there with them. You know, the, it does, the playground gets a nice day, it's busier in the morning, and then they kind of migrate all to the beach, and it's just amazing experience you can have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Paul?
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it's, I think it's very exciting, and I've said it a few times in the last couple of months, and I'll say it again, that when I applied for this council position in 2011, we were asked, well, whenever you apply, you're asked questions, and one of the questions was, what do you hope to accomplish? And I named some things. And I named some things. And one of them was, I'd like to revitalize the state park. Because I remember, that was one of the great things that we loved when we moved here, one of the reasons. And we would take our kids to the old zip line. And, you know, I just found a picture the other day of all of our kids playing on the zip line. And so it's, that comment sparked something in Mark Mullet. And so when he got to the legislative, he went to bat for us. And then the Friends Group, it really, really has taken a village over these last few years. And, you know, I say this not because I did anything, just because I'm so proud of what's happened over the last few years and everybody who's contributed. It's just so exciting. And I too now take my grandkids to the park, to that fabulous playground. And it's the, it's the favorite park to go to now. So I'm super excited about this and I wholeheartedly support it. So it's, I'm, yeah, I'm very emotional about it. So be that.
So it's hard to talk after you. That was very well said. I have different comments, though. One thing I want to make sure is clear is that I'm very supportive of a development agreement for this type of parcel. This is exactly the right tool when we have a large landowner with a, I don't want to call it a blank landscape, because there's already some amazing things there, but so much that can be incorporated into this area and we're dealing with one owner. This is a great tool to use. So I support moving forward with the agenda bill tonight and the use of the development agreement. I do want to make sure that as the conversation moves along, that we do things, that we ask some more questions in terms of what goes in under this EIS and how it all dovetails with what we're doing anyway with our Central Squaw Plan. And we know there's some short-term and long-term transportation improvements that are coming, as well as desires for additional parking. And how does that all fit together? Because to me, this is a piece in the puzzle. It just happens to be a piece that's owned by the state. So the value of having this particular park asset next to our city is amazing. I came after the park had had its heyday, moving here in the 90s. And I thought it was great just the way it was. There wasn't much there, but I really liked it. And I love the fact that it was located right next to Issaquah. And so when I think of partnerships and what good partnerships should look like, the state, I believe, has done a really good job in working with the nonprofit sector and also the for-profit sector to bring some pretty cool things to the park. And I agree with Stacy, the strides that were made in the last four years, it's phenomenal. What a success story for the Friends Group and for the state parks. And we have benefited. There's no doubt our city has benefited. About two years ago, we started on a parks strategic plan in our town. And one of my concerns was that we didn't seem to talk about those amazing assets that were right at our boundaries. And our parks director is currently working on a plan right now that absolutely identifies those assets that are owned by others adjacent to our community that provide enormous benefit to our residents. People have said they move here for schools. They also move here for parks and trails. And so there is the potential to partner, our city to partner with you and your other partners, to put amenities in there that mean, we might not build that amenity in our city on another parcel because it's here. It's going to be within your state park. So in terms of partnership, this is amazing. This is the best of the private and the public and the for-profit altogether working to get something. And so I'm very much in support of it. I believe it has not just got the benefits, obvious benefits for the city and our residents here, but also what a great regional asset. As Issaquah being the last city on I-90 on the dense side of that urban growth boundary, to have this available for development as a park and natural outdoor space, not just for Issaquah, because it really is accessible by millions of people. It's that close to Seattle. It's, could be, it could be really, new transit options could be right, right next to it. This can be part of this area of King County's playground. I mean, it's amazing what you can do there. And so yes, benefits for us, but for our neighbor cities as well. I mean, the draw that you could have with this park, it's, it's just amazing to think about. I also wanted to just say that with all the nonprofits I've ever worked with, I am just absolutely blown away what the Friends Group has done in four years on a very, what I would consider to be a very small budget. Yes, the city has contributed and the city of Simamish has contributed to get you going, but you've leveraged every single dollar and gotten so much more than I thought you possibly could. I'm completely supportive of bringing it forward this year and adding it to the list. We had a list the other day of some other items that the council might consider that weren't funded. I'd like to add that to this list.
Yeah, of course.
And I was, when I was sitting on development commission, I was almost giddy when the first plan came in and then destroyed when the recession came in. The last four years, you've just put the spark back in it. You've done an amazing job. So thank you. Cannot wait to partner with you. This is great.
Well, plus one to both of those. And I just add my own strong support for the idea going forward. It absolutely does, this does make it feel like the boundaries of Issaquah, which technically do encompass the park. My sense is this is how you actually start to make that feel real. And, and I do appreciate the work that Jeff is already doing. I already appreciate the projects that are, have been done and are coming. And I know there's going to be a lot of stakeholders. Get ready for a lot of interest from, that's really prime real estate in a nice location. You know that. So absolutely support, I want a support going forward, as already described.
Is there one more comment?
Sure.
And probably a future question, maybe. When we're looking at partnering on the CIS, it would be interesting to know if mitigation funds collected by the city for capacity projects could actually be used to leverage dollars to build improvements within the state park. I'd like to know about that.
Okay.
So this is going to go back to the full council on December 4th?
Mm-hmm.
Regular business?
No.
Not consent, regular?
No.
Yeah. Okay, great. Thanks, everybody who was here for that. Thank you, Peter and Nikki. Next item on the agenda. Agenda Bill 7405, end of certain development agreements relating to Isquah Highlands and Talis. Presented by Lucy Sloman, Land Development Manager.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi. So tonight, we're, is our second scheduled meeting of the, on the end of the development agreements and the replacement regulations. I have a presentation to cover the questions and topics that came up at our October 25th meeting. And then we'll figure out what to do from there. So we started this back in April. And as I said, this is our second meeting, land and shore, after the public hearing at PPC at the end of September. Our tentative adoption date is December 4th. And, yeah. And then we have 11 topics that we're going to cover this evening, based on things that came up at our last meeting. So first of those had to do with the relocation of parks, plazas and trails. There was a, there were some other criteria, there was other, probably criterion that the committee had brought up and asked to be in there. And really, it had to do with functional equivalence and a sense of public access, that if parks, plazas and trails were going to be relocated as part of a redevelopment project, that the council did not have to approve that. It could be reviewed through the land use permit with these criteria being met, that we were maintaining classification, they were maintaining size, connectivity. But the other one was a sense of public access, which I think was a great addition. Comments or questions on this one?
No.
Okay.
No.
Second was a big discussion on the triggers for site development permits. Staff had discussed how in the development agreements, only parcel size was the only trigger. In Central Issaquah, it was parcel size and building size, because we recognized that many parcels are small in Central Issaquah. And we wanted to ensure that big buildings had a public conversation. There was committee concern that that might miss some important buildings. And so we added the third trigger, which is in the IMC, which is designated streets. And so last meeting's request was, well, if we look at undeveloped sites, what would these three triggers look like? So that's what these crazy maps are showing. So on the left, these are the streets that staff identified as being the streets that would trigger going to commission at Isquah Highlands and Talis. And in looking at those, the highlights indicate projects that would go to commission. So for instance, the, across from Cafe Ladro and SIP is what's called Block 4B. The Isquah Highlands Community Association is looking at putting their offices there. It would not be the parcel size, it would not be the building size, but it would be the frontage. So that's why frontage is highlighted, just to kind of decode this a little bit. Block 20 is on here. They may actually not end up on this list because they have an approved land use permit and they may very well come in for a building permit before the end of the year. But we put them on here just for discussion purposes. They would not be triggered. They don't, everything's small and kind of tucked away for that building.
Hey Lucy.
Yeah.
This is super hard to read.
Oh.
It's super hard. So like, as you read them, can you like point at them?
Yes.
Like with the mouse so that people know which one you're actually talking about?
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's much better on my screen. Sorry. So this is IHCA. This is City Surf or Block 20. And then Shelter is this last one for Isquah Highlands. Their property is here. They have 1.8 million square feet. They have a preliminary plat in right now. Preliminary plat would automatically go to commission, so we're not really talking about plats. But the plat would break their property down into five blocks and each block would be two or so parcels. And so most of their buildings would be 45,000 or more square feet. But all of these properties are on frontages that are designated on this map.
Ask a question. So you said the Shelter Holdings property, so all, right now, it's just all one parcel?
Right. The preliminary plat is in review.
Okay. And that's a break? Their, the application for the preliminary plat breaks it down into several, how many different parcels?
Five blocks and then each block is two or so parcels.
Okay, thanks.
If we look at Talis, there are more parcels that are in play, maybe. Emmerich, which is this little expansion parcel at the north, it would have 24 residences. As we understand it, the person who's likely to develop it would do a plat, which would automatically send it to commission. But if they chose to do a site development permit, that, or if they did an ASDP or SDP, it would go to commission because of the size of the parcel. Parcel 9, which is owned by the city, right up under the reservoir, it again is so small, limited number of buildings, not on one of the key roads. However, it is owned by the city, so we can make the choice of what process we think is appropriate for having that conversation with the community. Parcel 13 at Shiber and Talis Drive, right here, it looks sort of park-ish right now, but that's a holding pattern. The city also owns that. It has a zoning cap of 6,000 square feet and the frontage would require that to go to commission. Talis Parcel 9, where the slide occurred, it had a plat on it. If it, if it was moved forward, if it's able to be developed and it was moved forward with a plat again, then that would automatically go to commission. But it also is large enough that, that if it was a site development permit, for instance, that would go to commission because of the parcel size. And lastly is Parcel 17B Trimest Property, which is below Timber Ridge. The size of the project, the location on the frontage and the size of the building, all three of those would trigger. So this is just to show you what the implications are if all three of those triggers were put into the code.
So big packet tonight, so I maybe missed this. Your original recommendation was just going to be on square footage and, I can't remember what else. But you are also now supporting this main roadway?
Right. So originally, it was building size and parcel size. Then at our last meeting, staff proposed adding the frontages. And what the committee wanted to understand understandably is, what did that really mean? So this was to sort of show you how that might play out with different parcels that might not be vested and might be coming forward under the replacement regulations.
I guess the second question would be, what big parcels up there are not triggered? For example, the Bellevue College parcel, where's that?
So Bellevue College is right here. It isn't triggered because it is still under the Wash.TDR development agreement. And they also have an SDP that's good for the life of the development agreement. The Block 19, which is right here, it's a residential project. They have an approved ASDP and are likely, I mean, we're having a pre-submital meeting for their building permit next week, so we don't see that it's likely that their building permit will not be in by the end of the year, which again would vest them. West Ridge's property, they have a plat in for the area here. Once a plat has been determined to be complete, that vests them. The rest of their parcels, Track D and these, because there's a development agreement for those, they are vested under that development agreement. So that's why there's just a limited number of projects shown with Isquah Highlands.
So the recent King County annexation parcel that also has a potential developable pad at the top, would or would not get an SDP?
So that has not, is not under the development agreement? It would not be under the development, the replacement regulations?
Well, to answer your question under the IMC, it would go to DC because the property's big enough.
Okay. That's good, because I don't know which set of regulations it falls under.
Were there any parcels on Talis that would not trigger an SDP that might be surprising?
No. The only thing that isn't shown here are Parcell 7 and 8, because their final plat has been remanded. So if it was fully overturned, you want to say something?
I do. Because so we, there's, so there's a property that's a little bit, and maybe it's the one, one of those ones I can't see. It is. So Parcel 9, the one that's owned by not us, but it's not even owned by us, but the Resmark parcel, if they were to come in for a different land plan, let's assume the land plan that they have can't be built because of the property.
Right.
Situation.
Right.
Is that parcel big enough?
Yes.
To go to DC?
Yes.
Okay.
So if they replatted it, it would go to the commission. If it had an SDP, it would go to the commission. So our recommendation stands as having all three as triggers. And we haven't written this code yet. We wanted to agree on what the triggers would be and then we would provide language to implement this. Assisted living, I did an excellent job of confusing you last time, so I'm going to try and unconfuse you this time. So last time, a lot of the information, all the information we were providing was about other jurisdictions and what they were doing, but it wasn't particularly clear on the slide, only in my head. And... only in my head. And so there were quite a few questions, and so I'll try and address those. There was a really, the confusion though, did lead to some really good conversations that assisted, we had really, in our discussions with PPC and UVDC, as well as PPC's recommendation, there was this vision for assisted living in which it would, though it's a residential use, it would occur in a facility that was compatible with commercial and therefore be allowed in commercial. And, and I think Councilmember Goodman's comments were important because what they highlighted was that although we tend to think of assisted living facilities as being large, they could actually be more modest in scale, and that might not be compatible with a commercial setting. And so in talking that over, what staff discussed was adding a minimum square footage, where it's going to be located, since it's going to be located in commercial, so that it would be of a scale and the kind of building that would be compatible with its commercial setting. So before I go on to the other two pieces, I want to make sure that I answer any questions that you have about that piece. So the other two pieces that came up around assisted living was the impact to adult family homes and Leo House. So first of all, adult family homes are home occupations, so any decisions that we make on assisted living would not impact that. Leo House is considered a group home, and what we proposed for group homes in the replacement regulations is that they are allowed in residential areas. So again, any decisions about assisted living does not affect Leo House. So our, the administration's only recommendation is to add this minimum square footage. This is where I may be phoning a friend.
[laughing]
Okay. FAR jobs housing ratio. So there were four questions that we were asked by the committee. Those are at the top of the slide. So there were two approaches that we took in answering this question. One was, what was the economic impact? That wasn't really one of the questions, but that is the way the EIS looked at it. And so we thought it was important to look at it from the EIS perspective before we tried to answer the questions that we were asked, because both of those are relevant to how we view it. So assuming full buildout under the EIS assumptions, the 1995 projected value was just under a billion dollars. But looking at representative projects that have been built and their current value, the estimate is that the project is 2.6 billion, so-
Can you explain what you mean by economic impact?
The benefit that the city would get from the development of these properties.
Time?
Oh.
So it's the assessed valuation of the properties. So we don't get $2.6 billion from Issaquah Highlands. It'd be nice if we did, but we get a portion of the property tax value that comes back associated with that. So, so the, the point that the analysis was doing is that there is economic benefit to the city for allowing that project to move forward. At the time in 1995, it was estimated, as Lucy said, at 400, 942 million dol-, thousand, one, million dollars.
Million.
Sorry.
That's why I said just under a billion. I went, went-
And so, you know, the point here is even if, even if Shelter Holdings built nothing on their property, we would have at least reached that estimated valuation that we were intended through the EIS analysis. And I can see there might be questions about that.
You can go ahead and ask questions on this before I move on to housing jobs balance.
Just to be, just to be clear, so 95 was assumed full buildout of all entitlements, and 17 is just actually what's been built?
So the 17 assumes it's, yes, it is what has been built.
It's not full build, I thought it was full buildout.
I don't have that in front of me.
I am looking.
Lucy, I thought you said is what is actually has been built. That's, that's why I was asking.
It was, the values were based on what has been built, but I think it was, so the way I read the memo, I think you-
So the, the way the economic analysis worked is there was a certain value per square foot for commercial and retail development in terms of its valuation. And so what I did was I took the current valuation based on commercial and retail that has been built in the Highlands. So there is both commercial, there's Port Blakely's office space, there's a medical office that has been built, and I used that dollar per square foot to establish the current value for commercial space. And so that 2.6 billion assumes full buildout. So it would assume that Shelter Holdings built all of their near 2 million square feet of commercial and retail. So I would have to back out if they built nothing, or something in between. You could do the math to figure out where it is. But the point here, I think, was we've well exceeded what was expected in terms of valuation for the project. I think there's a better conversation about jobs housing when we get down to that.
You've got $95, and you've got $20,17. So it's really just sort of a, it's kind of a context. It's not-
Right. It's an estimate.
Yeah, thanks.
So although it wasn't in the development agreement, housing jobs balance was the questions that we were asked, and we can certainly look at those. The EIS originally assumed a certain amount of entitlement. That has transformed over time. One is the conversion of commercial to residential, which was allowed by the original development agreement, as well as several major amendments to the development agreement that added residential. So we only looked at Option 1A, which was the original development agreement with the conversion, since the conversion has fully happened. So if you look at that, there's a two to one housing jobs balance. Option 1A plus the major amendments takes you to more like 1.9 to 1. So they're very similar.
And the major amendments included the 500,000 square feet of non-residential from the Mitchell Hill TDR, the 500 additional residential units from the Park Point TDR, and then the 100 polygon units from the Park Point TDR. So those are, that's how the, that's the 1A plus the major amendments.
So looking, I, I think part of the point of this question was really to look at, give us some objective ways to look at the various FAR scenarios that we're talking about, especially related to Shelter, given that they hold this 1.8 million square feet of remaining non-residential entitlement. So-
Before you go on to the FAR discussion, so there was a question raised by, so Shelter Holdings sent us a fairly long letter yesterday, and in going through it, one of the questions was about how we came up, how we calculated the jobs.
So the jobs, the jobs per square foot came out of the ITE manual. So ITE to generate trips, and that's Institute of Transportation Engineers, for those who don't know that. I know you guys do, but I want to make sure everybody out here did. So the ITE manual provides different trip generation rates for different land uses. And to get there, they actually also estimate the amount of square foot of each employee for both suburban, commercial office, which was what I used for commercial, and for specialty retail. So I used, I used the rates out of the ITE manual, which seems like that was the best choice.
So just looked at four different scenarios of FAR and how those would play out in terms of their impact to the jobs housing balance. And just, there were a couple of notes that we added, that an FAR of two or a little more is necessary to complete the buildout of Shelter's full entitlement. And, you know, are there other FAR, minimum FARs being employed in the city? Central Issaquah uses .55 for commercial, .75 for residential, and the vertical mixed use in Central Issaquah had a minimum FAR of 2.5. That's the one that you just approved in the last couple of weeks. So right now, consistent with the PPC recommendation, the idea is to keep it at 1.
So this is really cool. Thanks for the data. Super cool. And linking a housing jobs balance to a FAR, that was extremely informative. I think I can picture some of this a lot better now. So a couple of questions. I think in our comprehensive plan, which was not necessarily written for urban land use, we talk about a jobs housing balance, but we don't have a target. Is that true? We do have a target?
We, we do not have a target. We have, so we have, we have capacity estimates for areas in our cities. So like, for example, within Central Issaquah, we identify, I'm not going to pull a number, I'm not going to use a number. But, but we don't, to my knowledge, overall as a city, we haven't established a housing to job ratio that would, we would consider as optimal.
So maybe a question to bring back is that I do believe there's something in the comp plan that says when the housing job ratio gets out of whack, we intervene and do something. So I think you quantified for us now quite clearly what we get based on the original plus conversions and FAR, but I don't know what ideal is. So if the intention is that we remove the development agreement and make it urban zoning, what is the right number? And also, what are, when we say in our comp plan, we have tools to adjust? What does that mean? So that, that would be a couple of the questions. Another one is if we are going to really work on our urban zoned areas to ensure that we don't build suburban style again, can you give us an example of other cities and what their housing job ratios are that could create a visualization for us of what a two to one housing jobs ratio looks like in a community that has similar zoning to what you're proposing in this? And so that would be, compare us to some other cities so we get an idea. The data itself is awesome. This is really helpful.
Any other questions?
You, you told us where you got the, the numbers to calculate total jobs. Could you speak to that just a little bit more? Because when you, I mean, I, so this is not based upon any scientific work that I've done, but to, to think about there being 7,800 jobs up there kind of stretches my mind, or maybe even 8,700. Where are they?
So Swedish.
How many do they have?
So your economic development director should know. But at the moment, he does not. I can, I can, I can assign jobs per parcel to you. So you have, so part of it is, there are things up there that fall into the commercial category, like restaurants. You have retail employees up there, and then you have the, you have Swedish, you have Pro Alliance, you have, there's an office building that has IHCA in it, as well as, does PCL still in that, or did they move out?
It's a pediatric medical.
Okay. So we can, we can probably locate those for you if you'd like.
If we're going to adopt some type of policy that uses this, what we, you know, then I, I, this would be new. Like you said, it isn't something that we've codified before to drive policy, unless I'm going to say, you know, reverence the, and, and, so, so there's that. So I mean, I would, I'm not sure I like that idea, that, that this is the time to start doing that. Partly because I think the, because of the, of the intent of when we, you know, to replace these, the development agreements, it, I am very sensitive to things that we are considering that actually go beyond the original development agreements. And this seems to be one of them. To use this ratio, then to drive a minimum FAR. I mean, that's, that would be new.
Are there some other reasons that, to maybe consider using a FAR?
Well, a, a couple of things that come to mind for me. One is that we had a master developer who used to require certain amounts of development when they sold entitlement. They worked with applicants on what they were doing. That is no longer, that's not a partnership that we have or a tool that we have. And so it means that we have less tools to achieve the vision, the live, work, play vision. I think the other piece is that some of the remaining properties that are in place, you know, have between 50 and 60% of the retail and commercial that has not been built, and those are huge amounts. Now, we are not saying that every drop of every bit of entitlement must be built. However, you know, sort of FAR is a tool that is in place to avoid low-density, auto-oriented, more suburban kinds of development. And so that is a central part of the vision, and I think staff were trying to identify tools such as we're using in Central Issaquah to try and avoid the ultimate, the conclusion of the urban village buildout being something that is contrary to the vision that was established.
So one of the things that was telling for me when I did this calculus was, you know, the difference between a two and a 1.3 FAR. So going from, you know, two to one changes the jobs to housing balance from basically a two to a 1.3. And I don't have the memo in front of me, but I think that's like 3,000 jobs in terms of what the, the loss is. And it's huge from an economic development standpoint. But the, the thing that we can look at, and we didn't, and I think we should, is one of the things that both the villages took advantage of in terms of their environmental reviews was an internalization. So this, in theory, this balance of land uses is kind of optimizing the trip generation rate, and both of them took a credit for, because basically, like, there was an assumption that there's, you know, 3,000 to 4,000 housing units, and I've got, you know, 8,000 jobs, and some of those are maybe just going to go right there instead of coming all the way down to get on I-90 and get on the rest of the road. So I think we should also look at that and see what that internalization rate and the assumptions that were made, because it expected some significant employment in the, in the Highlands, and Talis did as well, by the way. So, I'm just saying.
Okay. So that's, that's a, that's a different measure. That's, that's a different metric. And that's interesting. We don't have any analysis on that.
Right.
And that, that's, I don't know if that, you know, it was just last year when we did, or earlier this year when we did, like, the traffic impact analysis. So are, are you saying that that was, that's not really, we're not, you're not talking about the same type of impact analysis? You're talking about, I'm not really sure how it relates, how we would use that information?
So let's assume that, so residential, commercial, retail. Right now, they all generate trips, right? And you could, and, and the way you do it is you generally add them all together to take, to figure out the total number of trips, right? Well, what was given to both of the villages was a credit. So if that was 300, the assumption was that really maybe it's only 260- So if that was 300, the assumption was that really maybe it's only 260, because some of those trips are internally captured within the village, because you can live and work there and play there. And so what I think would be helpful to this conversation, or might be additive to this conversation, is knowing what that internalization rate was. I believe in Talis, it was 15%. I don't know what it was in the Highlands, because that predates me, working here. I'm not that young. So I just think it would be helpful to understand what that number is, and it may influence this conversation a bit. May not change anybody's opinion, but it might help.
That's very interesting.
And if there are any assumptions made based on that large employer, potentially, you know, Microsoft at the time, with buses and, I don't know, it just seems like there would also be a consideration there.
Well, there may have been, because the park and ride was a required facility. But, you know, that doesn't necessarily affect the land use question, but there was clearly a transit component, because that's why the park and ride was required.
So when the city worked with the county in 2006 on the targets for jobs and housing that Isaguas would absorb up to 2031, I think by your last, by February of this year, you had told us that by the year 2020, we will have met the housing number, but we will only have about 2,000 of the 20,000 jobs. And so how does the zoning in both of these parcels impact our ability to meet those targets in terms of jobs? What was expected to have been achieved in this area and what would be lost based on changing to a different kind of zone?
Yep.
Other questions on?
Other questions?
There was a request to, the map in the upper right-hand corner shows the current state of, the current TDR map, which makes all of Isaguas Highlands a receiving site. And so there was a question, if we only looked at the non-resident, non-single-family parcels, which is what the replacement regs propose, if we only look at those, where would that allow TDRs to be used? That was a very interesting exercise. The map in the lower right-hand corner here looks at that. So non-single-family parcels are red and pink. Non-residential properties, meaning we peeled out the multifamily parcels. So multifamily is pink, non-residential and mixed-use parcels are red. So most of our non-residential, non-multifamily parcels are in the town center. There's up here where you have Lakeside Montessori and the little office building across from Ashland Park, as well as Star Point and Blakely Hall. School doesn't show up, I realize that, which is kind of interesting. So then, you know, there had been a question about, should this, the TDRs only be allowed in a TOD, which would assume a sort of walking, walking route, walking distance to the transit center. So the transit center is shown here in green, and this is an approximation of a quarter-mile radius from the transit center. So, you know, the idea of TDRs is as a smart growth tool. It's been predominantly used by the city, not so much by private development. And so although the council could, if a property owner asked or for whatever reason wanted to increase the zoning cap on a piece of property, that could happen. But I think the staff and administration feel that the use of TDRs ties multiple things together that we value. One is potentially increasing density where it makes sense, but it also relates to the protection of open space and parks and other things that are city values, as well as, you know, smartly taking development rights off of properties that may not be actually suited for the entitlement they have. So rather than just leave it to the overlay, which is a possibility, the proposal is to tie TDRs in, at least in the quarter-mile walking radius, to bring both of those values together.
It doesn't say it up here, but you're talking about a TDR receiving site.
Yeah, this is how we would change, how we would change the map and where TDR receiving sites would be located.
Okay. And so if the recommendation is non-residential, then that includes that little part that's up at the top?
Right. So right now, what we had put in the memo was just non-residential properties, which is non-residential and mixed use. In preparing this, we added another piece of information. We didn't change the recommendation, because we wanted to have a conversation with the committee. But the other piece of information that we provided was this idea of a quarter-mile walking radius, because it helped kind of get to Councilmember Polly's question about TOD and, you know, what would that look like? And so that quarter-mile walking radius is a way of starting that conversation and sort of looking at a geographic area.
I would have a concern with receiving areas being up in the middle of the Highlands, adding density.
Right.
Doesn't seem to make sense to me.
I have a question about that. If we're going to put this through the lens of, we are going to concentrate growth where it's more practical, if we do decide to go with a receiving site, we're balancing that out with protecting existing neighborhoods. And so all the little red pieces, to me, would all fall off the table. I would think a resident who lives up off of 25th, if all of a sudden that corner building were to be torn down and get significantly taller, would be pretty amazed that that was even possible. And so I just wanted to know, besides the fact that it's zoned a certain way, what other lens will we use to tighten this up? What other lenses are you suggesting?
Well, another lens could be that quarter-mile walking radius that we designate certain blocks within proximity to the park and ride, and therefore Discovery Heights Phase Two, Pro Alliance, Star Point, Blakely Hall, Lakeside Montessori, those would all come off. We, I think the map was really helpful to us to see where multifamily was located and to say, that doesn't make sense. So, you know, it was, it was definitely an educational exercise. We recognize that these ones that are out in the community may or may not make sense. That was, you know, kind of coming back and having the TOD conversation, because we, we could guess what it was, but we weren't sure necessarily what the committee members' intent was.
And then was there any, so obviously this map is new, because it was a request to see what it looked like. Is there any sense of community, Highlands community input on, on it being a receiving site at all? Any of the lands up there?
Yes. That was one of the topics that we brought up in the spring when we went out to the communities. The Talis HOA, you know, TDRs are pretty wonky. I think most of the communities didn't really understand what we were talking about, but it was something we put on the table. Talis HOA was very clear, we don't want this. We don't think this is consistent and necessary for our community, which is probably not unreasonable, given that there's leftover entitlement. Isaguas Highlands, when we talked to the HOA and the Highlands Board, they were more open. They said not single-family, but non-single-family parcels. That seems like something that we would be open to. So we had that conversation with the community. No one really said anything. I'm not sure how much we can make of that. Then we did this exercise, and I think we're, you know, putting it through another lens of looking at where it actually falls on the map. But we'd have not sent, for instance, sent this map out to anyone and said, like, the HOA or the Isaguas Highlands Board, and saying, you know, do you have a concern if this is more restricted? I, I think their general, I don't think it's untrue to say that Town Center is probably more where they were thinking about it as well.
Basic question, how are TDRs used in non-residential property?
So they're, they could be used either, well, they could be used to add square footage. Sometimes that's to, in Central Isaguas, that could be to go into the density bonus, so beyond the base height. If you want to go beyond the base height, you could use TDRs to do that. But otherwise, it would be adding square footage. So for the, like, for the villages, let's say you owned 50,000 square feet of commercial space, and you wanted to build 75,000 square feet of commercial space. Or if Grand Ridge Plaza wanted to build another retail space on top of an existing surface parking lot, they could potentially, according to this, if we kept it this way, buy TDRs to do that.
And I would add, you know, Pro Alliance has expanded twice since they got their original building permit. So.
And they have a giant surface parking lot.
And they have a giant surface parking lot. They've taken out a little bit of it. But, so all I'm saying is that over the course of the development agreement, we've seen some businesses expand, and they've been able to buy additional entitlement from Port Blakely. That won't be an option anymore. Each of them have, you know, everyone except for Shelter has pretty much built out their entitlement and city surf, I guess. And so there would be very limited ways that a business that we supported could expand. They'd either have to come back and ask for an increase in their overlay, or if we allowed it, the use of purchasing TDRs.
A TDR question. Is it like-for-like? A TDR bank has X number of residential units or square foot commercial, or is it something else? What goes in the bank, what comes out of the bank?
Our bank works two days, two ways. Our bank is a depository for TDRs. So if we are buying properties along creeks or other things, we have the ability to take those development rights, if it's a sending site, and put them in the bank for future purchase. But the bank can also print TDRs. So if somebody comes and says, I want to buy 100 TDRs, we can create 100 TDRs, which then we use the revenue to go buy property after the fact.
I guess if I was a commercial property owner up in the Highlands, I'm buying square feet, but if it's zoned mixed vertical use, I could buy square feet and housing in the TDR bank?
I don't know. So, so vertical, so in, in, you said in the villages, in the village?
Like, in the village, yes.
Yeah. So, so our mixed use is either mixed use residential or mixed use non-residential. So if it's a mixed use non-residential, you could only buy TDRs and use it as retail or commercial square footage unless you ask the council for a rezone from
To add the resident.
Mixed use, non-residential to mixed use residential.
But it is a question that we've shown the mixed use residential sites here, because they contain non-residential. So there, one of the refinements of this could be to say, maybe the mixed use residential sites can only add more non-residential, or they could add either. So, you know, that's a discussion point to consider.
That is a great question. That was one, I'm hoping if we're collecting more data, we go back to the community, because we have heard people who live up there come and say, yes, more restaurants, more everything. Not a big enthusiasm for, yes, more restaurants with four stories of apartments above. So I'd like to get a sense of that. Interesting.
Keep, what is, so how's that convert if, if we bought dwelling unit development right off a sending site? How does that convert?
1,200 square feet equals one residential unit.
Okay. So 1,200 commercial?
Yes.
Or retail, that means.
The wet utility equivalent is how we came up with that number.
Other questions on this?
Well, how are we going to, what are we going to do this evening? I have some other, there's, I have some other comments I'd like to make about TDRs, but.
Normally, we go through the presentation and have questions, and then we get comment from, and then we have our comments. And, so the only, that's what we normally do. And I think it's, it's, this was the second scheduled meeting, Land and Shore. And I shared with Lucy earlier today that I didn't, didn't really think that I was, I'm ready for it to be the last meeting. That's just a preview for my comments. And I was going to say before, public comments anyway, just so people didn't have to guess where I was. We'll talk more about that later. So I don't know what your specific.
Yeah, actually, you just, you just hit it. I was just wondering, because it does show on the agenda that there's going to be action tonight. And I wondered if that was.
So this has been a topic of discussion lately. Does, the, how things show up on agendas? And it, the Clerk's Office direction is that anything that will have action at some point is shown as action, even if we're not taking action that night.
Your action is to continue it in committee, or, so you're still taking action?
That's what I thought D meant, for discussion. Okay, that was more clear. Okay, that's actually very important. Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions on, five, topic five?
So right now, you put another filter on, which was the one-quarter mile. So with a one-quarter mile filter, what do you do when you have a single landowner who's on both sides of the one-quarter mile?
Well, I, so this was for discussion. I think we would designate certain parcels to identify which ones were identified for TDRs, or maybe we, through the adoption of this code, we revise the map for, the overall city map for TDRs. I mean, I think we can talk about the best way to implement that. I think we've kind of held off doing that until we knew what we were doing.
Actually, I do have one more question. Maybe you said it already, Lucy, I apologize, quarter mile. How random is that? Or is that some definition of TOD include quarter mile?
Quarter mile's considered a distance that people are likely to walk to get to services or to take transit. So it, it isn't random, but, you know, everybody's different. But that's kind of in a planning perspective, quarter mile is typically used.
Okay, thank you.
It's about a 10-minute walk. Anything else?
Ready for the next one? Okay.
Implementation of Isaguas Highlands Development Agreement. What have we learned? How has it evolved? Do we need to make other changes? In 1996, when the development agreement was adopted, roads generally were 18 feet wide. That was two nine-foot lanes, and parallel parking was six feet. The Isaguas Fire Chief, it was when we had our own fire department, the Isaguas Fire Chief had reviewed and agreed to this. 1997, when we did the first project, which I think may be, Councilmember Polly's photo was from one of these early projects, there were not minimum driveway lengths. And in 1997, we established minimum driveway lengths because of concerns of cars parking over sidewalks. In 2005, in the town center, both the parallel parking was increased to seven or eight feet, depending on the location, and travel lanes were increased to 10 or more feet, depending on the circumstances. In 2011, the residential parking was also increased to seven feet. In the last few years, we've been using 10-foot travel lanes instead of nine feet. So I guess the, the kind of conclusion of this is there has been an evolution. As much as the development agreements are a contract that can't be changed, they can be changed if both parties agree. And so we have worked with the master developer over the course of time as issues have come up to establish, or to make those kinds of changes that we thought were necessary.
So the standards have evolved, but now we're moving to the Central Isaguas standards. And so did we actually walk that through with the community about asking questions about those standards right now, which drive them crazy, in case there was some that weren't? about those standards right now, which drive them crazy, in case there was some that weren't, that aren't gonna get better under Central Isqwa, but might actually get worse?
So, Central Isqwa is much more like, or even a little bigger than, the standards that we've gotten to. So there are not, no nine-foot lanes. They're 10 or 11 feet. Parking is, I think, I'm gonna generalize here, I think it's generally eight feet wide for parallel parking. So, and the driveway lengths, that has ended up being carried through into development agreements, Central Isqwa, the replacement regulations. We've recognized that that was something that was needed for the very issues that were identified, which was, we can't impede ADA circulation. And so, I don't know that we've specifically asked because the Central Isqwa standards addressed a lot of these concerns. There's, there's always kind of a yin and a yang in the community between make the roads wider and slow people down. And wider 10-foot lanes, there was some information in the memo, the 10-foot lanes are considered kind of the sweet spot for pedestrian safety, unless you have a lot of trucks, buses, or large vehicles. And so I think we would be hesitant to go above 10 feet, given that pedestrian orientation is such a high priority in the urban villages. And yet, we, I think the point of this is that we also have learned, as we've gone along, and not retained the tightest standards possible, but trying to get to a little better balance between functionality and retaining slower speeds that protect pedestrian safety.
One other question about the Central Isqwa standards and Isqwa Highlands is, the Highlands has a extremely public trail and neighborhood connection system, probably one of the best in the city. The signage, but also just the way it was built. It was built to connect. And we don't have that necessarily in all of our city neighborhoods, but we definitely have it up there. And in Central Isqwa standards, can we ensure the neighborhoods that new trail connections and access, access points will be as well-done under the Central Isqwa standards as they've experienced under the development agreement? And I speak specifically to the relocation of the multipurpose trail that was going to be on Locust Street and got moved to in-between the Atlas Development. And the paving materials are different, and the signage is different, and it actually creates a feeling of privacy. And so it was supposed to be a multipurpose trail. This community is definitely one of our best, signed and connected. And how do we bridge that link over to make sure that the new stuff that gets built under Central Isqwa standards gives them that same complete, well-signed, public access, publicly-accessible network? You can keep, you don't have to answer tonight. Having walked it all, I just have huge respect for that element of this community was so well-done. How do we make sure the new stuff coming in is as good as the stuff that was built under the development agreement?
So, the only, the short answer, and then we can, on a sidebar, unpack that more. I think the short answer is, now that we've been implementing Central Isqwa for a couple of years, I think we've learned where some of the weaknesses are. And it's part of why we retain the trail standards for the urban villages, that we didn't feel that the tools in Central Isqwa were robust enough. But it's not, you know, partly it was a master developer who was very committed to that, and we don't have a master developer in Central Isqwa, so the city has to, in essence, be the master developer. I think that's part of the importance of the Park Strategic Plan and some of the corridors and connections that they've identified, that I've seen as just sort of in the preliminary draft. And then, you know, our goal is to work with the Parks Department to develop a, you know, really smart parks and trails plan that then fits into Central Isqwa. Now that they've done all this outreach to the community, we have a great amount of data to build on. And so I think that's, you know, a secondary step we're gonna have to take on in the near future.
And just thinking out 10 years, it would be a shame if expiring the development agreement and moving to new standards, it's pretty obvious when you go to the neighborhood, this was built after the development agreement expired, this was built before. So somehow, that guarantee that these standards will generate the same connectivity, the same visibility, the same public access that the other one had would be...
So, I think that, you know, that's why we kept the goals, the guidelines, the trail standards. That's why those are, that's why we retained those, because we think they, we agree, those are an essential part of the community. And that, you know, we were looking for, you know, we were looking to reduce the number of standards, but not at the expense of the character and the things that are really important. And so those things got retained in the urban villages because that was, there were, the master trails plan for Talis, for instance, is being retained, because we wouldn't want to communicate that any of those trails were not important to be retained or extended if there was an opportunity. Trail grades. Mr. Kapler brought that up last time. We carried forward, basically, the trail general standards for both Talis and Isqwa Highlands were very, very similar in language, so we merged them together and carried them forward. The first piece up here is the language that is in there right now. It says that you may need stairs or ramps where there's steep grades, but that's not defined. So, we looked at what we've done in Lakeside Development Agreement, which is nearby, thought that there was appropriate continuity between the two communities, and more specificity in the Lakeside Development Agreement. And so we're proposing to add this sloped piece into the replacement regulations to better unpack the intent of that original standard. Urban, there was a concern about the use of the word urban. And that was kind of an interesting exercise, to see that the Talis Development Agreement used the word urban two-and-a-half times more than Central Isqwa. So, I think that staff's perspective is that the, again, the most important thing we can do is to retain certain key pieces of the vision. The goals, the guidelines, the land use standards, and that those really set the framework, the important framework that will carry that character forward, and that things, the Central Isqwa standards, like parking and landscape, will just help fill in implementing that vision, but not change that vision. And so we didn't propose any changes to the word urban.
So, in the original Talis Development Agreement, there was something called the Village Center. Can you describe what that was, and if it was an urban element? I don't know much about that.
So, I'm trying to think if I have a map, just to make it a little bit easier. So, we have Talis Drive, and, and then Shibeer. And on either side, parcel, this is called Parcel 13, and this is Parcel 16. Very lyric names. Those two areas on either side of Shibeer at this intersection were considered part as being the Village Center. It had a broader range of uses, there was a higher density of residential, there was an expectation of plazas and sort of community spaces. In the end, we have not gotten as much as we had wanted. On the other hand, when Spring Peak, which is sort of the tip of Parcel 16 developed, we did get 6,000 square feet of non-residential and a plaza. And then we are hoping through the Parcel 13 piece, that the city was given, that we will have the opportunity to build more non-residential, has an entitlement of 6,000, and additional plaza space to create that sort of focal center.
So, you know, knowing that that was what it could have been, the word urban kind of makes sense. But going forward, I think I need to be convinced why it still makes sense. To me, what it looks like is a dense mountainside community, it's residential. And so, I'm not sure that the Highlands and Talis are entirely different. And the fact that there is no Village Center in Talis even makes them more different. And so, what is the benefit of still calling Talis urban? Why can't it be called mountainside or something else? Because, you know, people there drive to everything. They don't, it's not urban. They don't stay there for their entertainment, they don't buy their groceries there, they might be able to buy a coffee pretty soon, but it's not urban, it doesn't feel urban. So why wouldn't we want to just get rid of that designation?
Well, Talis in its goals and guidelines describes its urban village-ness as a mountain village. You're right. That is the way they described it. But I guess, I guess my point is that in using the word urban, they've defined it themselves through the way they established and wrote the goals and guidelines, that it's their own sort of brand, their mountain village. And with both the goals and the guideline documents, I think we were hesitant to touch those. I think we felt that those were key pieces that had resulted in the character that the community had been built, and that to open up a whole new discussion about how to change goals and guidelines might be an undertaking, fairly significant undertaking for a couple of parcels that were left, and that the tools that we had had allowed us to get the character that it has, and we're not interested in changing that character.
So is there a potential option to not rework vision and goals and documents that were written in the 90s, but instead, within our code to bridge, meaning a section of the code that describes the actual character of it now versus the aspirational character of it as an urban village with a town center that you could walk to, shop to, dine and entertain yourself? Is there a way just to bridge that doesn't require rewriting? Because I have a hard time marrying what was in the original agreement and then still calling this an urban village. It really grew into something different. So if there, that's just a question, whether or not there's a way to bridge.
Yeah. Well, in the very introduction of 1819B, the replacement regulations, under purpose, we added a paragraph describing Isqwa Highlands and a paragraph describing Talis. Each of those were sort of taken and synthesized out of the development agreements, and that might be a place to add some language like that. Because if you were ever doing any kind of interpretation or modification, those kinds of purpose statements are some of the things that you go to look at.
And then it would be possible, if the Central Isqwa design standards are changed at a future date, potentially to a completely urban component or a new component that we haven't talked about, there would be justification then to say that that doesn't apply to Talis.
Right.
So, if we decided to drastically reduce our parking standards, and there were still properties available in Talis, that wouldn't apply to Talis, because it's mostly a residential mountain village. That would be possible?
Sure. I mean, if, if, if I'm understanding your point, I think what you're saying is, you know, we know what the Central Isqwa standards are now, but we're not freezing those in time. This isn't another development agreement. And so, at some point in the future, if the parking standards, as you, the example you gave, which I think is a good one, were, like, there was no minimum. I mean, that's, that's a Seattle kind of thing, no minimum. And so maybe we would get there, and we might say, "Well, based on the vision for Talis, we would not do that. We would retain the minimums we have now, for instance, because it is a different kind of village in the city." Is that what you're saying? Anything else on this one? We're getting there.
For a moment, we were back on topic two.
We were. I think we're pretty close to being done. So, there was a question, concern that we weren't, that, that the items that are in the red box down here were being stripped out of uses in Talis, and did that mean that we weren't allowing schools in single-family neighborhoods? And that seemed crazy. And I think we're actually saying something a little different, so I think that was an important clarification. As you can see, Talis, single family, under the development agreement, huge list of uses, including public and quasi-public uses. But now the neighborhoods have been built, the character has been established, this list of uses is not really appropriate anymore. There aren't even really any big pieces of land that you could put a school on. So we were stripping out the public and quasi-public uses. However, if there happened to be an opportunity to, or a desire to put a school in a neighborhood of Talis, we still have the CF zoning that's available to us. So by taking it out of the single-family list, we are not eliminating the possibility, we would just do it in the same method that we do anywhere else in the city.
And, just a question on the Talis proposed list. When you have a small lot, dense residential community, does, do accessory dwelling units make sense as a, an extra use? Is that, is there a sufficient parking for that? Does it change the character of the neighborhood? I know we allow them throughout, but already there are parking, if you go up there, a lot of capacity is on the street, I mean, they're using it. So can we actually achieve additional density up there with something like an ADU?
So, I believe an ADU requires an additional parking space, one, and, I phoned a friend. And, so, I, I think that those kinds of issues can be addressed. When you see ADUs in places like Talis, and there are some, they're often daylight basement, they're located in a daylight basement, so they aren't necessarily building an additional structure, and they would have to have an additional parking stall.
That's a good question, but you say one additional, but what, how do you count the parking spaces that are in a single-family home today? If it's a two-car garage, and the parking and the driveway also fits two cars, that single-family unit just has got two cars to their allocation, and they put an ADU in there, okay, now they got a spot on the driveway. So it's not the creation of anything else, it's using what's already there.
Sometimes, although sometimes...
I'm just saying, it wouldn't, I, I, it sounded like you implied that somehow they would have to come up with an additional parking area, when in fact, they don't.
They may not, no.
It would just have to demonstrate that there's three available, whether those be garage, driveway, combination, and potentially even an on-street space if there was a, if those were out in front of the lot.
Although, I don't know that we've ever done on-street for ADU. We have seen, the situation I've seen more commonly is two in the garage, and maybe they still have the apron parking, and then there's an uncovered stall, you know, an additional paving area that's next to the garage, for instance.
Well, I mean, the point of your answer is that you don't just allow an ADU with no other conditions, you must have parking.
Right.
So you just can't add an ADU in Talis just because it's allowed.
You have to meet certain criteria.
Certain conditions.
Yeah. Okay. Hill sides and slope sites, we've had a lot of conversation with the Land and Shore Committee about this in the design manual now. I'm gonna really confuse your brains, because I'm, there was a request last time that the hill sides and slope sites and site walls be pulled into the replacement regulations. And so we took the language that was in the design manual and edited it to fit the urban villages, and there was proposed language in the memo that you got. Well, yeah.
There's a couple of pages, I don't, didn't write down any specific questions about it, but edited to fit urban villages, I'm not sure I quite got that.
Well, for instance, it referred to Central Isqwa, or it referred to architectural styles. Those, those are not the, this isn't Central Isqwa, and we don't use the term architectural style. So, we switched it over to neighborhood types, which is the language of, for instance, the urban villages, and we referred to urban villages. So that's, I'm just mean, we edited it to make the terminology fit with the regulations, not that we were taking things out or putting things in, in terms of content. Vesting. This was the very last element of the replacement regulations. The intent of this is to try and clarify what happens to land use, active land use permits that have not submitted a building permit or where we have a pre-app or some kind of ASDP or SDP in the works. State law vests preliminary plaits, short plaits, and building permits. And so, those are not, there's no question about those. But the question was, we wanted to provide clarity during this transition time. We had some draft language in the October 9th draft that you received. However, the city attorney had not had a chance to actually edit that. He reviewed it and revised it, not so much to change content, but just to clarify and tighten up the language or make it less dense. I'm not sure he achieved that. And so, we recommend adding vesting language, but we realize this is a conversation that we haven't had with the committee yet.
So, when you say vesting language, they would vest the rules under the development agreement?
Right.
So--
So, there were basically--
For a limited time.
Yes.
So, a pre-application, usually, usually that's a, it's a complete application. This is just the pre-app that would vest. And so, why would we do that?
So, it was a similar conversation that we had when you were considering the moratorium. To get to a building permit, you have to have a pre-app and you typically have to have a land use permit.
So, I think based on the current conversations we're having with Shelter, I would say it's a complete application. Now, if they happen to have a pre-app and we can determine it at pre-app, then it's pre-app. If they want to go straight to land use permit and we can't determine a complete application until then, it's complete application. Sometimes it can happen at pre-app, but sometimes it doesn't happen until land use submittal. Sorry, that's a level of complexity you guys don't need. That was more for the audience.
So, the moratorium was a little different. The moratorium was a surprise. This is not. This, this has been in the works for 20 years. And for a year, we've known we were going to be working, a year ago, we knew that we were going to be working on this in earnest and even way before that. So, I'm concerned about, about that. That's, that so said, I guess, you know, one of the questions is, what are the pros and cons of vesting at the pre-app stage? What, what are you vesting under? What are the rules? Was there a preference to have them vested under the development agreement or, or not? So, I, I'm not necessarily opposed to it. I just want people to know it's a--
Right.
It's different.
So, I'm doing this somewhat from memory, although I can pull up the language. I think that if you have a pre-app, you have six months to submit a complete land use permit. So, that's the length of time that you get. Then, once you have a complete land use permit consistent with IMC, once you have an approved land use permit, you have three years to implement that, which means to submit a complete building permit. You know, this is a discretionary decision on the part of the council.
So, I think we can put together a kind of a discussion, a white paper on pros and cons.
That was great.
I think that would help the conversation.
Right. I agree.
Totally agree.
And that was the last piece, just whether we're going to do additional meetings in November, whether we're ready to recommend back to full council. Doesn't sound like we are. Right now, we're tentatively scheduled for December 4. I just want to remind the committee that we do have to have a public hearing on a small part of, there was one group of people that we recognized that we had not noticed before the PPC public hearing. And so, part of deciding kind of what our schedule is, is the ability for staff to send out notice about when that public hearing is going to take place. We'd like to send that out well in advance so that if people have questions, we can hopefully help them understand the implications of what's happening so they can decide if they need to attend and testify at the public hearing.
We'll go to public comment in a couple minutes, only so that the folks who are here and watching have an idea of, so when they're, usually when they're making comments, they don't necessarily know how we're leaning or what we're thinking. And so, I just wanted, just like I said before, I wanted to give a little heads up about how I was feeling and that I wanted it to come back. This is a hefty topic to have it land and shore substantively twice. And we have been super busy with some other heavy lift items, namely moratorium items, and we're in the middle of budget. And so, I personally haven't had the time that I need to study this and be thoughtful about it. And so, I wouldn't be ready to make a decision tonight. I would be, my preference would be to have it come back to land and shore. And if we're looking to get this done by the end of the year, then we may have to schedule a special meeting to do that, only because the next meeting is long as well. So, those are my, those are my thoughts and you're free to weigh in without making decisions and then we can have the public comment.
I'll weigh in right now that I do agree with you that so, a lot of this is material that I'm really ingesting and getting a chance to hear from others for the first--
Were you done, Paul? Sorry.
Yes.
Okay.
So, I was actually at the discussion phase going to bring something else up for the two of you, which is that it's very hard for the public to track most of what we do anyway. And we're talking about ending development agreements in neighborhoods that have thousands of people living in them. And if they have attended some public outreach at some point and provided some input, where we end up may be different. And they, I know people can track us on meetings and come here, but I feel like this is a big enough one. I kind of like a process question in here. When we think we're close to the end line, I feel like we need to go out and talk to the public about it. Not because it's so much of, it's time for more public comment, but at least to get some understanding that we've done the right thing. Sometimes I feel like we go so far down and then it gets approved at council and then neighborhood could say, well, that, you missed our intention. I just want to sort of ground truth that what we're doing is what those two communities want. And I don't know what that looks like and we've never done it before because we have an expired large development agreements like this where we have existing neighborhoods. So, I was going to throw that on the table at the end.
So, the only piece that I would add just to sort of complete all the desires is that I would add that for Isqwa Highlands, Port Blakely is the master developer. And I, we realized today this may not have been in your packet, so we feel a little remiss. So, that's why I wanted to make sure you were aware of it. Last November, so a year ago, they asked us to terminate the development agreement. So, we had already been working on that. They asked that it be terminated September 19th, which was the day after the end of the build-out period. We've kept them apprised. We've had conversations. They get all of the packets that we're sending out and they are aware that it was not going to happen September 19th. But they did ask that, they were hoping for by the end of the year. So, I don't know that there's a requirement for us, but I do want to say that there, there are parties that have some interest in when this concludes.
The folks who would like to speak to this agenda?
None?
Single.
Hi. I don't really understand that the, what you were talking about, about making Talis not urban. I'm not sure that satisfies my feeling that every time you, you read anything, it's still going to be urban, urban, urban. So, I'd have to let that, see it written down and try to understand what that says before I would, I would be able to judge any of that. I want to go to the language on hillside, slope sites, and site walls. So, development must respect the topographical character of each site through building, design, and siting and minimizing the height of retaining walls with the intention of blending into the native environment. So, I actually don't think that that catches what I think should happen on these slopes. I don't think that we are willing to cut the bejeebers out of the land and then just re-sculpt it so that it looks okay. I think the idea is you don't cut the bejeebers out of the land and you learn to build within what the contours of the land are with minimal disturbance. And that is very different than what is presented here. This is, you know, yeah, hey, we could dig down 40 feet and we could fill 40 feet and as long as it looks sort of natural and blended, we would be okay. That's not okay, at least in my, my particular brain there. And the site walls, I saw there were no pictures of site walls and I was sort of looking forward to what site walls were supposed to look like. So, I would still like to see some site walls in there because I got excited when I started seeing all the opportunities. And I would also like to see railings and things like that so we can understand what they're supposed to look like. And then last, one of the big things about both urban villages, I actually, more Isqwa Highlands, is maintenance. Right now, we have split responsibilities with our own parks department and the homeowners' association and it's very loose. It's never really been solidified in any sort of memorandum of understanding. So, going forward, I think it would be nice to formalize who's doing what and why for both of those villages because right now it's like a wink and a nod. Thanks.
Thank you. Sorry, I just thought about--
Good evening. Gary Young with Shelter. Tia was not able to be here tonight. I, we just wanted to bring attention to the letter that came in today by email to you to make sure that you all had it. It's 24 points and nine pages and, and we are doing everything we possibly can to work as collaboratively as possible and there's just so much information. I'd, I'd ask that if you could, please take some time to, to go through point by point. We're really trying to look at this from all perspectives and thank you so much for doing that. And I also appreciate your comments very much about giving this the additional time and I think it's good to go, go out to the community because it is involving thousands of people and these, these steps. And it's very important that they're all well-aware and see what's, what's transpired. And we had over six community meetings and we have a great relationship with the community. And I'll just make a few comments, not going through all of Tia's letter, because it's very brief and our comments do fold into our experience in working with the community. So, first just on Port Blakely, I have been in communication with them recently as today. It's my impression that their concern is that the best outcome comes for the community and that, that they're not held to a date to the end of this year, but I'd ask that staff would contact them and clarify that. I can't speak for them, but I think what they care about is that they did invest a huge amount of time and energy in this community and they want the best outcome and for this transition to go as well as possible. First, I'd like to just say that with respect to our property, we'd like to be able to build out our property with a mix of uses, primarily the retail, restaurant, and the office. We've surrendered the residential portion and, and do that consistent with the development agreement and respond to the desires of the community and work with the steps that are economically viable. The replacement regulations, in our opinion, as they're written now, unreasonably prevent us from developing our property in this manner and need further analysis and amendment prior to adoption and going specifically, the agreement, development agreement did not contain a requirement for any minimum amount of commercial development to be constructed on the Isqwa Highlands and the commercial property. We understand that any development we build must be commercial or retail and we want to build both. The issue is that the required amount and the configuration of development that you are requiring in order for us to build, especially with this FAR of one, it becomes economically unviable. It doesn't work, especially on the retail component. The retail should be allowed to be standalone. And if you choose to impose a minimum FAR and a structured requirement, structured parking requirement, they should not apply to the retail portion because for us to be able to meet the goals and objectives, things like, you know, a view restaurant and, and some of the things that we've been talking about, interspaces, spaces, and to provide the, the parking, we just, we can't hit the one FAR. So, for the past several years, the city's been talking about when the development ends and the intent to codify the development agreement with necessary updates to science-based items that have changed over time, like stormwater and critical areas. And when this process started earlier this year and for the first 10 meetings, the city was continuing on that path, but then suddenly we got before the PPC hearing and staff proposed a minimum FAR, which changed the course completely. So, now the city's primary focus is driving commercial density to Isqwa Highlands. And I just ask, it's not clear to us why really the city's hoping to achieve this and what they're hoping to achieve with the minimum.
Gary, can you sum up, please?
Yep. I'll do it right now. One more paragraph. An FAR of one, just to do the relationship, would mean about a 900,000 square foot component of office, which is a very, very significant component, which is more than what has ever occurred in this city if you had put it all together. And so, what we're asking is to be able to do this project over time. Finally, we want to continue to work collaboratively with the city and work with the code and we appreciate your taking the additional time. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm Patrick Malaniet with Foster Pepper here on behalf of Shelter and I just wanted to make a couple of brief points. The first one addresses vesting and the comment about vesting at the pre-application process. And I would say, I've read the language that Mr. Haney and Lucy have come up with and, and I would say I agree with it. And the reason why is this. Vesting in Isqwa, the pre-application process in Isqwa is quite different than almost any other jurisdiction. Normally, a pre-app meeting, you come in with a sketch of a project and you sit down and you have some preliminary discussions. In Isqwa, it's a packet that is submitted that takes a whole consultant team and, and tens of thousands of dollars to put together and it's a very significant hurdle that, and under Washington's vesting law, like West Maine versus City of Bellevue, municipalities have to be careful about putting too big of a hurdle before somebody can vest. And in this case, I think that the, another requirement is that you have to get notes back from the city. And so, there's the preparation of the materials, there's a big process involved. And so, I do think that the idea of allowing vesting at the pre-application stage is appropriate. Regarding the FAR, I was struck by the, the analysis of FAR versus jobs and I think that the problem is that if you create an FAR requirement that requires a certain type of structure, you may not have a market for that structure. And in that case, you don't, you don't get a job for that ratio. And as Gary pointed out, in the original development agreement, there was no FAR requirement. And in fact, the Microsoft project would have come in at an FAR of .44. So, here in Central Isqwa, it's even at .55. So, requiring an FAR of one is a radical change from the development regime that was in place under the, or is still currently in place under the development agreement. And it does upset the ability of Shelter to create the retail component that a lot of the people in Isqwa-- And it does upset the ability of Shelter to create the retail component that a lot of the people in Isqwa Highlands, at least when they went out to the meetings, said that they were in favor of. So that we would ask you to reconsider that and as Gary said, particularly for the retail portion of the development. So, and then finally, if the city wants to encourage commercial up in Isqwa Highlands, there are other ways to do it. It could be incented in your zoning code rather than being mandated through this FAR requirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Others?
Hi, Ben McGrann. I'm an Isqwa Highland resident and took part in some of the community outreach meetings that the Shelter Holdings Group held and was very impressed with the amount of engagement that they have. I've been in the construction industry for about 10 years, working for large corporate corporations, doing construction project management. And the amount of time that they took to engage the community, to understand what the needs were, from the retail component to the office component, the live and work in that space where you can go to restaurants and retail from your office space, I think that they really took that into consideration, was very impressed by that. So a lot goes into these plannings of how they would approach this and then the economic feasibility from them. And so I think that by changing the rules on them really jeopardizes the project. And so I consider that you guys give them some latitude in that when making these requirements for the FAR. Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen Porterfield, and I'm representing the Talis HOA Board, which I am on. I gave them a full briefing after the meeting on the 25th. Thank you very much. It was a great packet you put out. One of the surprises from the board was that in our architectural design standards, we did not have design standards for mountain village. We had a hard time finding our design standards in what we, what was presented. So we are requesting that as you go forward, that you direct the city staff to work with Talis to develop those design standards. Because we very much like to continue as we build out the rest of our community that we kind of continue with that. One board member said, "We want to make sure we don't get another Atlas up here." So we would like to maintain those standards. Second, Talis HOA has, over the last several years, we've spent a lot of money working with a landscape architect, developed significant goals and guidelines, and have been upgrading our landscape. We will be working with a forester this next year and we are planning to put together a 20-year sustainability plan for our forested areas. So we were really happy to hear that there's going to be some landscape requirements on the 100-yard buffer that you guys had identified. But we are requesting that we be part of that design process so that our long-term strategic plan that we've laid out for our landscaping can be continued through that. We have documents we are happy to share and really work to have a better outcome than what's on sale at the Home Depot this weekend. And the last one is, we hope as you go forward, that you will take a few minutes, come up and visit parcel nine during daylight hours. We were all rather surprised when we received an update from the city that said additional dirt is going to be removed as part of the mitigation process. I don't know if you've seen what's going on there, but the cement panels that they are putting in to stabilize the slope are taller than me, about this wide, because I stood next to it and measured it, and are several feet thick. There is no way to mitigate or in any way disguise or make a good design statement over what they are currently installing to stabilize that hillside. So we are very concerned, given the fact that 70% of our community comes up to that intersection and will look at that piece of property every single day. So we are hoping that we can partner with the city council and the city to ensure that the final outcome has good design aesthetics that reflects that urban, that mountain village feel that is Talis. But please, come see it. It's bad. So thank you. We appreciate the hard work and the outreach that your city staff have been doing and we are happy to do anything we can to support a positive outcome.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name's Ken Bellamy. I'm with Trimet, one of the owners of parcel 17B in Talis. We're continuing to work with Lucy and Keith on the termination of the development agreement and the implications for development on parcel 17B. It's been a long but productive process and we appreciate their efforts. The current proposal has a minimum FAR density of one. This remains as a concern for us. It does not permit us to respond to users such as schools, churches, and certain types of businesses that Isqwa would welcome into the community. The central Isqwa plan encourages the highest density in central urban core area closest to I-90. The Rowley Development Agreement, approved a few years ago, covers property located between the central urban core area and Talis, and it does not have a minimum FAR requirement. We request that Talis be afforded the same flexibility. We have proposed that parcel 17B be allowed to build up to 77 townhomes on a portion of the site in lieu of the 92,000 of the 516,000 square feet of office that is permitted. With more thought and a collaborative effort, the remaining issues can be resolved in conjunction with delivering significant benefits to the Talis community and the City of Isqwa. We are available for those discussions with city staff and with the Talis community and ask that time be allowed for that to occur before proposing zoning is, before proposed zoning is finalized and sent to city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Other people wish to comment? No? One last call? Okay. So what would you like to do? I heard bringing it back for another land and shore. And would you like to talk about that now or?
Stacy, we can't hear you.
Bye. On. Okay, so let's talk about another meeting. I don't know that we can fit it into the next regular meeting. It's, isn't it really long?
I don't know what's on the next meeting. We kicked at least Visions and Old Town to the next meeting. So it's probably about as long as this one.
Okay. So should they work with Keith in sending out date options for a special meeting?
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, everybody, for coming. We'll have another chance to talk again.
Stacy and Keith, you take a lot of notes during the discussion. Is it possible that when those are written up, you could just send them back so we understand what's coming next time?
Yes.
We just see the list of questions would be helpful.
Yes.
Great.
Do you, do you want that before we do the memo? Because the memo tries to summarize that. Is that helpful?
Why don't you do your memo and I'll do the summary minutes? I mean, that's a whole other conversation, but yes, I.
It's probably fine together.
Okay, the next item.
I'm still here.
7342, Architectural Fit and Urban Design. And this is coming back, I think we had some.
Couple.
Yeah, a couple of follow-up questions. And this one may be ready to move on tonight.
Yeah.
Okay. If we're on my desk, we might be just getting pizza.
Yeah, please, go get pizza. I'm happy to stand here for a minute.
Just keep talking.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, go.
Go. Okay. We've done a bunch of stuff over the last few months. You know.
Oh, good. I'm kidding, sorry.
So tentative adoption date of November 20th. We're seeking concurrence with recommendation and we have five things we want to talk to you about tonight. First had to do with walls. One of the questions was, is the 10-foot wall height limit determined by aesthetics or safety? Walls over four feet are designed by an engineer. They go through a structural review. They have to comply with certain safety factors. So the 10-foot height limit is not based on safety, but is really an aesthetic criteria or decision that we have made as a community. Second was, should long walls be broken up? So I was trying to decide how to have this conversation, so I don't know if this is good, but I'll give it a try. I picked two different walls. They're both about the same height, around 25 feet. One, the one on the left is not terraced. It is modulated somewhat. The one on the right is terraced with about four feet at the bottom and then 10 feet for each of the other two. And so, yes, we do think walls should be broken up somehow. We think that is being done through the terracing, partly because 10 feet creates an opportunity where with the appropriate trees and landscape, you can scale and screen them. Anything else or do you want to talk, think?
I think what I'm struggling with is that because we've allowed massive land altering, my words, for a long time, we still think in those terms. And this design manual might only have one hillside piece in it, but I believe that this, what is here should be a template for the rest of the city as well. It still, to me, seems to encourage rather than respect the landform that we have. And so it's still a lot of cut and fill. It's a lot of take all the vegetation out and plant new vegetation. And I had hoped that as we went through this first attempt at it with central Isqwa, that we would change the tone. And I still see the same tone, which is, we're going to reshape the land when we can and we're going to engineer it. And I was hoping for a different alternative. I don't like it. There's not really a question in there. I guess the question would be, what else could you bring us?
So this is just the walls. This is just the walls, right? And there's the other one on the hillside piece, right? So when there's walls, this is what we're talking about with walls, is, is, you know, doing the terracing and we're responding to a comment that came out of the community last time, which was, you know, there should be a horizontal limit to that. In other words, the wall shouldn't be longer than a certain amount. Well, I think, I mean, part of that responds to, I think, what you just said. So maybe, I don't know if we should be starting with walls. Maybe we should be starting with the other one and ending with walls. I don't know. Because your concern, I think, is if you do the other one right, you will have walls, but your walls won't be a quarter mile long.
Correct.
Right?
Yep.
Because in theory, it should somewhat mimic the topography of the natural site. And you will, you might have walls, but there won't be giant parcel seven and eight walls. I think I could say that on TV.
So maybe I'll wait for the.
Okay. There was also a question about rooftops. This, you asked me to provide the information that we had provided before because we didn't really think that there was more to provide. This is basically the same thing. But it does lead into the other piece that we were asked to provide, which was rooftop use. We were focused on how in the urban core, where you're going to have flat roof buildings because both allowed architectural styles have flat roofs, how can we use those to really provide additional open space and also potentially some greenery at the edges? The intent was not to have this displaced community space at the ground plane at the street. There is some flexibility, recognizing that with building codes, there may be limits to how much of the roof you can use. Also, because we require terracing above, I think, the fourth or fifth floor in the design manual, you will have terraces. So what we said was, if you, you can erode the corners or have terraces towards the top, but they have to be available to the tenants or residents of the building. And to make those kind of more community gathering spaces, where you have to set the building back, it can be between five and 20 feet, we said if this is meeting this requirement, it has to be a minimum of eight feet, that that would create kind of enough sort of gracious space to be usable and five feet's more scaled like for a residential unit. And I changed the upper right-hand picture because I thought it was a better example for office use of roofs than the one I had, which was the same roof, but different picture. I didn't have any comment on this. I mean, questions? I didn't have any questions.
Any questions?
Okay.
Okay.
The third topic that we were asked to come back was, you know, what happens when you have a big parcel with several buildings on it and incremental development? How are we getting there? So we had talked about the way central Isqwa is written right now, the threshold is 50% of the building value. Above that, you fully comply. Below that, you comply to the fullest extent, practical and feasible. When you have these multi-building sites, if they're all on one parcel, it takes a lot to get to that 50% threshold because each building is not assessed separately. So we, to try and show what we had been doing for fullest extent, practical and feasible, we provided two examples of what we've done. I want to say upfront, these are not using the design manual. So architecturally, character-wise, they would look different. But it's just to talk about the kinds of changes, the extent of changes that we would, that we see doing. So they're both at the Heritage Square project where Denny's was located. So this was our Denny's before. This is the Corner Bakery after. This was an instance in which they were replacing virtually the whole building except the slab remained. We moved elements of the building as close as we could to Gilman, but there's a very large, I think, metro easement that's behind the sidewalk, which restricts having any kind of structures in it. So we worked with them to get the entrance facing the street, to have a pedestrian connection from the Gilman sidewalk to the front door, outdoor seating, weather protection, clear glass windows, so to really change the character and relationship of this building to the adjacent street. The second example is also at Heritage Square. It's back in the larger kind of continuous building. It was formerly Round Table Pizza. The new tenant is Cafe Rio. This kind of yellow line demarks the two different spaces. You can see from the building on the right-hand side of the upper photo, that's kind of the character of Heritage Square. It's kind of a farm, barn-like building. Cafe Rio was interested in making changes to the elevations, but really, that was, they were predominantly doing an interior remodel. So, but from an exterior perspective, the things that we worked with them to do was, you know, parking comes right up to the walkways on both sides of the building. So on both sides, we introduced planters to try and provide a little separation. We, there's outdoor seating all along the west side. They added weather protection on two sides as well as the building treatments to make that part of the building stand out a little bit, which is consistent with central Isqwa and which bigger buildings are broken into sort of smaller segments. So these are the examples that we had to try and help explain how that incremental change would happen. Any questions? Okay. This is just an update. I want you to know that this map for the natural context. I want you to know that this map for the natural context zone keeps changing. So you can see more and more areas are being added as we sort of go back and think about it. The two probably major changes that happened on this map from the last one you saw, is we went back and looked at the parks that are next to Central Issaquah, but are not in Central Issaquah. So, Sammamish State Park, Cora Park, those kinds of things, Confluence Park. And then the other thing is, we had originally used what was identified as a stream in our GIS, but Class 4 streams are not actually shown as streams. And so we had quite a bit of internal conversation, and so now Class 4 streams are also shown on here. Then, these are the two, these are the updates that were made to the two new urban design pages, based on our conversation with the committee last time. So first of all, the word desirable was removed from assets. I agree from... And then we added language, can you see this at all? No, not really. Sorry. We added language that says, so, starting here, what it says is, "And existing trees consistent with IMC tree retention requirements, IMC 1812." So what that does is say, even though this is in Central Issaquah, on these hillside slopes, you have to comply with the IMC tree retention instead of the Central Issaquah And then on the site walls, we were predominantly changing images. There was, you didn't like my concrete wall with dots. And so I, I and a few friends spent some time going through pictures on the internet. It is really hard to find good pictures. So the two, concrete walls come in a lot, and we need pictures that are at least tolerable. I don't know if we found the right ones. I brought some alternatives if we need to talk about them. So one is, this is like a three-foot retaining wall with a reveal. And second was, these low sort of walls used, these, this is obviously a water feature, but they are a series of sort of about four-foot patterned concrete walls that step up the hill. The other pictures that I tried to add were ones that were a little more traditional. I think, given the architectural styles that we have in traditional Issaquah, it seemed important to show what a traditional wall might look like. Okay? That's, I think that's the end. Yeah?
Any more questions?
Not for me, but maybe from you.
Just a question on the last recommendation. Oh, no, it's not the slide.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. So, "Allow for script in areas and formatting changes to create a final Word format document." I was, haven't sat down and looked at it all the way through yet, but have we used as many pictures of what we would consider to be successes in Central Issaquah as in our guide? So have, for what we like, that's been built, have we put that in? And I just say that versus, you know, you've got good pictures that maybe match the definition, but do we actually have pictures, more pictures, that we can put in that are like Central Issaquah?
Anything else?
So this is...
Or elsewhere in Issaquah? Good point.
Right. No. I mean, I, I'll just be honest. I mean, you know, Crandall-Rambula used the pictures that they thought represented what they were trying to communicate and fulfill for us. We did that, and you may not remember this, but we, like, had 35 different Issaquah projects. We took pictures. We sent it to them. They didn't really put any of them in. I don't know what to say about that. I don't, I never got a very conclusive understanding of whether they ran out of time, money, they didn't think these projects were good examples. I don't know. If I asked them that, I don't remember their answer. But there are a few Issaquah things in there, probably more "don't do this" than "do this." Atlas figures prominently. So that's where we are right now.
Other questions?
So part of the reason why we wanted to get it into a Word document is so we can then manage the content. And I think, you know, as much as I think we've had a good relationship with Crandall-Rambula, they are very headstrong. It's one of the reasons why we chose them to do this work, is because they're very opinionated. But we heard from Development Commission, I think we also felt like some more local examples would benefit the manual. I think we just realized we're going to have to put those in later. So, and, and, and part of this was, if you remember some of the conversations or comments from the DC members that came to land in Shore, we see this as living. And as we get some good examples, which I think we will get, we can then populate the manual with those good photo examples.
Ready for, will allow for public comment? Great.
I gotta say, I'm starting to have a hard time with this, because I've forgotten what's in the manual now. And so it'd be sort of nice to have a link to the newest rendition of the manual somewhere that's obvious, because I couldn't figure out where to go again, the whole thing, as best we have. Now, maybe, maybe I'm the only one, but I couldn't remember whether, in orienting the buildings toward a park, or whatever, whether that orientation would reach across a large street. So, are the buildings along 56th and West Lake-Sammamish Parkway required to orient toward the state park in the manual? And I don't know. I was trying to figure out how much of the state park was going to be buffer, so you could use that as a tool. But I don't think you want to have any buildings with their back to the state park. I just, I, I think that that would be a bad idea. But frankly, I can't remember if it's already solved. The rooftops, my memory of the reason for the rooftop activation was that people from afar wanted to have flat roofs, look like they were blending in, and it was a missed opportunity to have an active thing on the top of a flat roof. So in this, I don't see anything that talks about softening a flat roof line from afar. I see pictures of, like, a hard railing, but with no plantings and no particular, anything that makes it blend in with the mountains. And I think we, I thought we wanted both of those things. And there was one other thing, but I didn't type fast enough before I got called on, so I forgot.
Thank you. David?
Walls are definitely something that needs some work. We learned Monday night, it might have 1,200 feet of soldier piled, piled walls along Newport with a certain project. And the visual problems with that are, I think, are great. Plus, you know, how we deal with hillsides is definitely something we need to face. And the walls are all part of that whole thing, that are generated by trying to develop on really steep properties.
Thank you. Nobody else here from the public, so I think we're down with a public comment. And what do you...
Question for you first? The comment about trees and vegetated green roofs, I thought I talked with you about that earlier this week or last week. Is that in here somewhere?
Landscape that makes the terrace more pleasant and which is visible from the
Question about buildings being required to face, orient toward the state park. Is that something that would be in the visions, or would be in here?
So, two things. One is, and I can pull up the manual, if it would be helpful to look at the specific page, but I'll just start with the map. So, the way that we've shown the natural context zone, for instance, with Lake-Sammamish State Park, is that if you're in within 150 feet, you have to comply. So even if there's a street, you would comply. Now...
And that works both ways, because, because where we have, where you're across the street, which was what the question was, you have to orient the building to the street.
Exactly.
Right? So the fact that it has a park across the street is a double bonus, right? But those buildings, both on the south side of 56 and on the...
East?
Lord, whatever side of West Lake-Sammamish. You know, they're going to have to face both those streets, which will also face the park. So I think, I think the answer is, I think we've got that covered.
So, but I want to, I want to just clarify one thing, because we had a lot of discussion with C. Crandall-Rambula about this. If you take like a building in this location, in which the park is behind and the street is in the front, the front door is going to face the street. But the natural context zone requires building treatments, building setbacks, trails, certain kinds of landscape. There are all these things that come, but if, between the street and the park, if you have the front door facing the park, then you have the back of the building, or some secondary side facing the street. And most people are going to arrive. So we want the building to have openings, windows, different treatments when it faces the park, but it doesn't orient to the park in the sense of having its front door to
That was it? Those are the questions? Comments?
Yeah, comments about next steps, whether we're going to...
Yeah.
...make a recommendation to council, whether there are still... Any issues that are outstanding enough that you want to bring it back, or you want to...
I'm, I'm a little bit stuck on one piece. No surprise, hillside slope stuff. And why I'm stuck is because this is mostly a flat valley floor. And there is two parcels, one currently being built, and one that could be built, that have hillsides in this entire area. And so, the context of tonight's conversation, you know, it's a smaller piece. But it was our first attempt at maybe looking at something that would be a hillside overlay that might get a different result than we've gotten at other times. I'm not sure we're getting a different result. I'm not sure we still wouldn't see a Alice wall somewhere. I don't know where. I don't know how the other hillside parcel potentially could be developed, because I'm not a builder, but I don't have a great degree of comfort, comfort with what I see here would get something that would be aesthetically pleasing over on the other hillside lot. I think it's going to look pretty engineered again. And so, I'm torn, because this is not a huge and significant portion of Central Issaquah, but I want this done right, in this piece. So I'm, and I'm not sure what to tell you. I don't even know where to send you back. I just feel like we're going to get some of the same outcomes with this, and that's worrisome.
So which, which specific piece is giving you, is bothersome? Is it that, is it that... So, there was a comment during End of Development Agreements. Connie said hillsides build within the contours with minimal disturbance.
Right.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. We're not going to get that in the walls, probably. We're not in the walls of language, maybe? I don't...
I guess...
I mean, I don't know. That language seemed to capture what Mary Lou's concern had been.
That's the intent.
Yeah. And is it possible to just add that language somewhere? And then if it is, then her concern is taken care of? And if it's not, because that's too ambiguous, then that's, then it's still an issue?
Well, there's a big, there's a bigger conversation. If you're going to say that you have to work within the contours, are we not going to require structured parking? Because then they can't dig into the hillside to bury the parking. I mean, there, it's, I totally get it as a value of the community. I totally...
Not going to be a Frank Lloyd Wright building, right? I mean, that's the, that's, that's working with the contours, right?
Well, if I went to take it all the way back, I'd say, why do we put two hillside properties in there anyway? So because we did that, we try and imply an urban standard. The backstory is, those two parcels probably never should have been in the Central Issaquah, because they're not suitable for urban construction. They're on slopes. But they're there. So I want something in here that deals with them. And if that means they can't do structured parking, then they're going to have to figure out what else to do. Because either we believe that we build a certain way on hillsides, or we don't.
So what if there was something that said, unless otherwise required? That would include the structured parking requirement. Unless otherwise required, then the building had to, it has to be built within the contours of the land with minimal disturbance. And then, maybe it's on the docket for next year to consider removing that.
So, okay, so the objective that's up there, Mary Lou, the only thing that's missing for you is, I mean, because it says minimize disturbance. So I guess the question, what's missing, is it, is it...
Within the contours.
It follows the existing contours.
So minimized disturbance, to me, means that when you try and construct on a slope, there's several things that happen. Yes, you can engineer stability back in, but basically you're going into a natural, stable feature, and you are taking out a lot of soil, which is a lot of cut and fill. And maybe in some cases, on slope properties, it's exacerbated, because there's a slope. So you're losing, you are, you are changing the profile of the land. You're losing soil. You're causing more trucking. You disturb and damage other trees that may be in the footprint of it. You change flow patterns, and we can engineer our way all out of that. But it seems highly disrespectful of the landform. This is still heavy on the engineering side. I know we can do this. I totally get that. But it, it also completely changes the hillsides. And so, a hillside overlay, to me, is meant to say, you started off with something wonderful, a hillside. You know, now put your structure there. Instead of, I can remove two-thirds of this hillside, terrace it back, and add underground parking, and I can fit within my building envelope. That, to me, is not good hillside development. And so, I know there's only two parcels, and they're in there, but it's like, we have got to move away from that. That is what the community is saying, stop destroying our hillsides. And I think part of it is going in and digging out half the mountain to put in underground parking. That's not, that's, I don't think it's acceptable. I don't think the community thinks it's acceptable.
Add an A that says, to the maximum extent possible, or, you know, unless otherwise required, build within the contours with minimal disturbance? And only if, when, when it's necessary to have exposed cuts, which will, and, what does it say? Fills shall be minimized?
I feel like we're trying to create something that probably exists somewhere else. So, there's...
Language?
Yeah, that there's a jurisdiction that does, does this with, and has language, and I don't know who that would be, or where it would be. I think we're practical, and as much, you know, as much as possible. People come in, say, I can engineer my way out of this.
Sure.
And they'll dig it out.
So, then the question, so are you wanting it to come back? Or are you wanting to move it forward, and, and I'm just putting forward options here, move it forward with the ask that additional language be proposed, that, you know, in order for you to vote for it at full council, you'd need to...
Yeah.
So that's up to you.
The... The conundrum is that there's only two lots that this applies to. And so I feel compelled to move it forward because I believe we should be getting out of the moratorium.
Right.
And 99.9% of what I see here, I really like. However, for me, failure would be to move it ahead with this, get out of the moratorium and have a hillside project come in and do something while we're working on better language.
So we're, and the good thing about the manual is it's actually both sides of the sword, right? So we were focusing on this, this concept of kind of matching topography, which for me is really hard. And I guess the question is, can we go the other direction and say, so what's inappropriate? And what I heard you say was significant importer-export of dirt from the site. I know we've talked about significant removal of existing vegetation. And I don't, I mean, I don't know if we can expand on that laundry list. I like that better of saying, don't do these things.
Down in the inappropriate part?
In the inappropriate part. Because that way, that's clearer to me than I think some general language. So for me, I actually, the words like minimized, those words, those kind of words bug me because that's, that's, there's 20 shades of minimizing, right? But I think the more we can spell out the things we're trying to avoid, I think that's better because that's clearer for me to say, okay, are we, are we doing these things? And, and that for me is, is maybe a better choice.
The other thing that I'm thinking of is when we, you may remember our terrible slog trying to redo building heights in Central Issaquah a year or two ago. And we did a bunch of research all over the country. And my memory is that Prescott, Arizona, has some architectural stuff related to buildings stepping up hillside. So, I mean, the other thing I could offer is to try and get my hands on that and share that and see if we want to propose through the committee any additions beyond the inappropriate language that Keith identified. No, they aren't, but that seems like the, on the hillside sites, that may be where we're going.
The parcel behind Home Depot. Parcel on the south side of Nisswood Apartments. You can see the purple triangle over there.
So what, what would you like to do?
Actually, I think Lucy's suggestion is a good one. Maybe there is something that belongs in the appropriate and the inappropriate that would beef it up, but I, I just, you know, even though there's only one hillside left...
Well, I get that. But do you want to bring it back to committee or are you ready to move it forward with proposed language?
You mean, meaning it goes forward and when we see it at council, it's got the new language in it?
Or Lucy emails it. You work with her a little bit. You're, you probably are going to be the one that needs to be the most, you've been the most vocal about it of us three. And so maybe if it, Lucy worked with you a little bit, you felt more comfortable. I mean, we wouldn't see it, but...
You wouldn't see it until you voted on it.
Right. What came out? Yeah. You'd be blindfolded. I'm, I'm, I'm only pushing it to see if we can, to see if we can get there, but I don't, I'm not pushing you to do anything you don't want to do. I'm just making suggestions, suggesting some options to get us across finish line. I think that's the last.
Because I think we have about a week before the agenda bill has to be together to go back. So that gives us a little bit of time to try and wrap this last issue up.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. How do you feel about moving it forward to the full council?
Yes, and I, and I agree that it seems like this should be maybe its own issue. This is obviously, I mean, this, for the whole city.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And, and that's, I agree.
Yeah.
That is something we need to do. And I, Keith made a suggestion, which was to outline what was inappropriate. There's some other language there that's been proposed, which seems fine. So let's see what you can come forward with this, but I think as a separate administrative or legislative effort to redefine hillsides in general, I agree with that.
So this will be coming forward, coming to which just...
November 20th.
Okay. Okay? Consent? I'm just joking.
Well, you really like that. You like to use that, don't you?
I'm just joking. Yes. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We're going to keep going. Feel free to stretch your legs. The final item is inclusionary zoning regarding the development moratorium. This is a discussion item.
This one is a discussion item. That's because there's no agenda bill.
Is there a D next to it?
Yes, there is, sir. All right. And in keeping with my previous presentations, I have a partner for this one. So I'm going to lead off. Arthur's going to do cleanup and then I'll close the door at the end, hopefully.
No.
Shall we, Mary Lou?
Go ahead and start off slowly.
I'll start off slowly. All right. So we brought to you the Housing Strategy Work Plan earlier. And if you remember, there were nine, this is all background, there were nine housing strategies identified. Housing Strategy Six...
Go ahead. She knows the background.
Was increased developer-provided affordable housing in Central Issaquah. I only have like two slides, so I don't want to go too fast, but... All right. All right. So key points, mandatory inclusionary requirements. So here, again, for me, and this is, this is discussion tonight. So you guys don't have the agenda bill. The agenda bill's going to come back to you guys next month. So this is really just starting this conversation, starting for you guys to think about this inclusionary piece. So the points are, what are we trying to accomplish? How far can we push the envelope? And I will explain that in a sec. How many units might we get? And then what additional questions from the committee might there be? All right. So this gets enabled through RCW 3670A 540, Affordable Housing Incentive Programs. And I'm going to read the last paragraph. The statute allows a GMA city or county, that's us, we're the city, to require a minimum number of affordable housing units that must be provided by all residential developments in areas where the city or county decides to increase residential capacity. In other words, in areas it decides to upzone. And that's a very important part. That leads into how far can we push the envelope? So we're going to talk about three different areas and that'll make sense in just a little bit here. So you guys upped the FAR in vertical mixed use, which right now is kind of semi-yellow. The core area where we already had an inclusionary requirement of 10%. And then vertical mixed use, which is the purple and previously, or where it sits today, there is no requirement for inclusionary within the vertical mixed use area. We did not include, so the other parts of Central Issaquah is Rowley and they're under development agreements. So any changes to inclusionary would not affect them unless they volunteered to agree to that. We also didn't include Western Gateway because it's pretty much all built out at this point. There's really two small parcels left. And then this area that's kind of at the south end of Central Issaquah, it's got a bunch of different loving names to it. I don't think we saw that pushing additional density in this area at the south end made sense. So really what we focused on were three areas, vertical mixed use, the core, and mixed use area. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Arthur, who's going to run through a bunch of numbers with you guys to explain how far can we push, given we're really not talking about significant upzones.
So I'm going to...
Go introduce yourself first.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Excuse me. Arthur Sullivan, program manager.
Yeah, for the TV audience.
Of Arch. And tonight, extension of your planning department staff. So when we were looking at this, going back to the comment that Keith was making, and I think an important point to make here is that your system is set up to allow a base and then a bonus up to a maximum. And what is being proposed in this, putting forth to you, is not changing any of the maximums. It's changing the bases. And you already changed the base for the vertical mixed use area. So for that area, we took what you did and we said, now what might affordability, could you link to the action you did? The other is we had to look at what your current provisions are and say, if we're going to go from a voluntary to mandatory or change your mandatory, we have to give some documentation as to the logic why, with the basic intent being to find a mixture or trying to find what you're, a balance of the value that you can argue you've given by changing your base to affordability requirements that you're putting in place. When we start doing these numbers, we didn't throw away what you have now in the core. We built on top of that. And I'll try to explain how that worked. And then outside the core, you don't have anything in your base so that we could only add, we could only create affordability from an increase in the base. Okay? So a little bit different approaches in different areas, which is why if you, when you see these charts and you, I think you've got something in your packet, if you looked at them, you see such different percentages. The other thing that we tried to do in looking at this and sort of looking how the numbers were playing out, because you're giving different amounts and the math was working out, is inhering the comments from the housing strategy is we are also now proposing different levels of affordability and we added a level of affordability that you haven't had in the past. So we're proposing that potentially you would get a mixture within your base requirement. You would be getting units potentially at 50, 60, and 70% of median, and that's for rental housing. Your code allows everything to be a little bit higher for ownership, but sort of keeping it at that context because that's mostly what we're seeing right now. And whereas today, everything is at 70% of median. So there is, and, and we'll sort of explain, and you could play the math. We're trying to give you enough information. If you wanted to play the math game, you can play the math game if you want. But, so we just put together a scenario based on a baseline and what's the increase and what we think the value is. The other thing to keep in mind when you're starting to look at these numbers is the math is different now than it was five years, six years ago because market rate rents have gone up faster than median incomes have gone up. So your, your gap, what you're asking the builder to give you, is a little more significant now than when we did the math for you seven years ago. So we have to be conscious of that to some degree when we're putting this balancing act together, kind of thing. Because when we're doing the affordability, it's costing them more per unit than it was when we're doing the math seven years ago. So we were trying to be sensitive to that since you're going mandatory. Okay? So with that, what we've given you is a chart for, and let me look at my notes here to see if I forgot any of the real basic issues. Oh, and the final thing is that because we're going mandatory, you'll notice we're proposing two options in each scenario. And we're proposing those be it the choice of the developer. And what, we had a couple motivations for doing that. One, because we're going mandatory. We've been interviewing a lot of builders for other cities because you're all doing housing strategies right now. And what we're learning is different builders work differently and how they put deals together can be very different. So we thought by having these choice options, that you still get the same amount of value. It's just a matter of if you get fewer units, they're going to be more affordable. Okay? And several other cities do things like this now. Redmond does this at this point. Samamish does this, where they give some choices to the builder. The other reason that started to motivate this is some of our areas, we were getting to math that was higher than 10%. And one of the things we've heard from builders is what really hurts them is when we take away market rate units. And so one of the motivations by doing, giving a choice was, what first drove it is in our first scenario, we had a percentage over 10%, okay, required affordability. And so again, since it's a mandatory approach, we thought at least give you that consideration. So those are probably the major kind of basic elements that went into doing these charts. Okay? So the first one is the vertical mixed use area where you just approved increasing your base FAR. So in this chart, the non-colored first column on the left is what you currently had on the books prior to this year. And you basically had a 1.7 FAR and you had a requirement, because that was in the core area, that 10% of those units would be affordable at 70. So we just took a sample project and what we started doing across the page here is showing you how much affordability you would get under the current rules versus what you would get under the proposal. So what we are proposing, you went up to 5.0 FAR, but that, this is the hardest one to sort of explain because your FAR is so high. We did our models at a lower FAR because that's a pretty high FAR. So we picked an FAR of about 2.7, I think, or 3.5 in that first blue column. So the first blue column is we said, if somebody built at that FAR, what would your, what would that building look like? And we did that at the FAR of 3.5. So that meant the bonus was, no, I'm sorry, it's a, yeah, it was 3.5 in that first column. The total number of units would have been 143 units. I'm just sort of going down there. And of that, 14 would be affordable or seven would have been affordable at your 70% level, but because it was above the 1.7 FAR, they would have had another 14 units at 50%. That's your current provisions. In other words, up to the base, 10%, above the base, 20% at 50. Okay? I'm going to skip the next column because I want to just jump right into sort of what we're proposing as the alternative because we use the same FAR as that, that first blue column. So in the first proposal, we're saying that instead of doing, you're going to do everything as a percentage of your new base. So it's not going to, you know, it's the same number of units as before, that 143 units, but now the math is we're proposing 10% of the units would be at 70% of median and 5% of the units would be at 50% of the median. So you would get essentially the same number of units, units under your current provisions, but you notice the affordability's flipped around and that's because the math has changed. But you're still getting the same amount in that scenario. But what you've created, and this is the main thing to keep in mind here, is the example you had right today where someone built just outside the core and they didn't go above the base. What you're doing by doing this is you're saying every project, no matter what their size is, will have affordability. Okay? And what we're saying here is you're making that base higher because you've approved that. And what we've tried to do is look at the math and say, we think you could ask for 15% of the base now, not the 10% you currently have. But you have to sort of mix up that affordability because of the value you added on to what you already had. And so you can see that, this is just to show you what your mix is, is that originally you would have gotten, you would now get seven units at the 50% level and you get 14 units at 70%. Okay? We also did a second choice where we said, what would, what could we get if we capped it at 10%? And so there, we're basically saying, the alternative for a builder is to do 10% at 50% of median. Okay? As an alternative. So that's how we think when we looked at that value of increasing that FAR fairly significantly, this is how we feel is the reasonable approach. Now you could mix the numbers up in different ways if you wanted, but we feel like this is sort of getting you to a limit when we look at the economics of that increased value added on to what you already had. This, it gets, this is probably the more complicated one because you went up so much. But the next one is...
Actually, I think, can we go back to that for a second?
Yes. Okay, I'm sorry.
So Keith, the Atlas...
So, Keith, the Atlas example would be a FAR of what?
They had to be under 1.7.
Yeah. So, you know, so they have a big surface parking lot on the backside. So, I don't know, I could get that number for you, I don't know that off the top of my head.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
So, under our new rules with 50% structured parking, I guess what I'd be curious to know is, if Atlas had to put 50% in, what would the FAR be? And the reason is, I want to visualize what our show's talking about.
Sure.
So, say it was pretty, pretty low. It is very likely that in the next five to 10, maybe even 15 years, we wouldn't see much, many buildings taller than Atlas. So, we're going to have a generation potentially of buildings that will only be five stories tall, and they will have 50% structured parking. So, I understand how Arthur went through the table, but are there things on the table that we're likely not building in the next five, 15 years? Like a FAR of five?
So... So, no. So, the thing, I think of the value of this was what Arthur said earlier, which is, right now, outside of the core, so the core has the 10% inclusionary, and outside the core, there's zero in terms of the base requirement, but if you go above into the density bonus, that's what triggers the affordable. So, your question about, what are we likely not going to get in the short term, and the short term might be the next 10 years, we may not get very much building in the density bonus. So, what we're doing with this is, we're assuring that those units that come into our city, into the central Issaquah area, within the next decade, will have affordability associated with them.
So, it's kind of setting the stage, saying, because we've given them something they probably won't use, we'll get the, we'll get the 10%, but the reality is, that there is a value for future potential to do it. So, whenever the market decides, they can come in with a project that has the density bonus, if they've never built anything, or there's always the option, they can come back and build a taller project at some point in time. And for that, we get 10%.
Yeah. I think we believe we've added value. If they choose to not take advantage of the full capacity of that value, that's their choice as a landowner.
That's their choice.
Right. And keep in mind, we're not, you still have a difference between your base and your maximum, and we're proposing, it's a smaller increment now, we're still proposing, we're proposing keep that all the same as you have now, 20% of that would be at 50% of median. So, we're not proposing touching any of that. Now, the reason I put the map back on is that, keeping in mind, you know, what we were trying to help you respond to is the comment that almost 50% of your area has no requirement now. And so, this was trying to find a way that everything would have something like your core. You might make the argument, leave the core the way it is, you know, you could sort of do that, but we're giving you some alternatives, because we thought we heard you wanted to try to maximize the percentages. So, we were doing what we could without pushing the base, we thought, too much. Okay? So, that's sort of what, why we were doing what we were doing there. Okay? So, now, for, so for the other two areas, we didn't have any guidance from you yet in terms of what to do with the base. So, we're just throwing something out there for you to consider. And so, in this case, this is now for, the second one you have up here is for the balance of the urban core. So, it's the rest of the red area, where you currently have a requirement for 10% at, of being affordable up to the base. So, your base now is 1.7. We're proposing going up to 3.0 as your new base in the core area, and to have the affordability go to 12.5% at 60% of median, where you currently are now at 10% at 70. Okay? Or, as an alternative, because it's above 10%, 10% of the units at 50% of median income. Okay? And that's up to the core, up to the new base. So, by giving that extra additional amount, we sort of took your old formula of 20% at 50, we looked at that value, and we watered it down a little bit, because the economics have changed, and we added into what you have now. So, we sort of blended your old base with the new increment you added and the value of that, and put it all together and gave you an overall average. That's sort of the stew we create. Okay? And that's how it landed. And that gave us the opportunity to get you at a little bit lower affordability, you know, at a more, a greater affordability level, 60%, and a little bit higher percentage. Okay? Or alternatively, the same percentage, but at a much greater affordability level. Okay?
And we took, and one of the reasons why I think Arthur and I went down this rabbit hole is, is I think we heard from you guys through the Polygon conversations, this, that less than, because right now, it's 10% at 70, and we could have, if it's just quantity, if you want to do stew quantity, we could leave it at 70, and it would get you a higher than a 12.5%.
Right.
But I think part of what we heard was, there's this need at lower levels, and so that's why we're exploring the 60 and the 50 AMI for you as options. But if you guys want to give us some feedback that you'd also like to see the 70%, I think Arthur can run that as well.
Exactly. That's what we're saying. We can do whatever mixing and matching you want. The rent loss will always be about the same gap. So, then we have now, outside the core, and this is the area where you have nothing in your base right now. So, here, you're not going to see as much, but we, and there, because it was outside the core, we were being a little more sensitive about doing as large an increase, so we only went to 2.5. You know, it also has a base of 1.7, but we only went to 2.5. Now, there's also, I wanted to point out, in all of these, just like you did a height increase for the vertical mixed-use, these do involve a new base height of 60 feet for both the rest, the balance of the urban core, and it's currently 48 feet. So, we are proposing to be able to accommodate that extra FAR, an increase to 60 feet for a baseline, for the height in the core and for the outside, in the, just the mixed-use area, outside the core. And here, though, we only went to 2.5 FAR. Again, just sort of, just a sense of, that's the more outlined, not the right central core area. And when we do the math there, we got to 7.5% of the units at 70% of median. And again, because you only added a little bit of FAR, and you have to spread that over your total. Right? So, that's why it's a much lower number, because you have to also pick up the old base, which had zero. So, when we do the math there, we only got the 7.5% at 70, or alternatively, 5% at 60% of median as a choice to the builder. So, that's the sort of theoretical explanation with numbers that go with it. This is something Keith threw together to sort of say, if we look at now the core, the base now, and say, and look at your capacity, what you see here is theoretically, you should potentially get more units, but probably what this chart doesn't show, and I did try to do it really quick, is that big number is going to be more at 60% of median, where on the top half, it's all, all of these would be at 70. So, you would be getting a lot of these units potentially at 60% of median, or if builders chose 50, and you would still get a significant number, especially the VMU ones would be at 70% of median. So, you're seeing affordability levels at 60 and 70, with a lot of them being at below 70% of median through this approach, as well as, and then you'd still have, some builders might still choose the 50% option, and you also still have your bonus, which would be at 50% of median. So, cumulatively, you get a much broader mix of units by doing that. And you may net out with more, and that's hard to say, I mean, that's where it gets tricky, how people are building. But what you do know is, every building, regardless of size, will include something. And to make the point that Keith was making, is Redmond went that approach with their downtown many, many years ago. And what we found is, is that not all the, and they did it through, their incentive when they did it was increased height. And they went to like four stories. Not everybody went to that height. You know? And there's some buildings that stayed at two stories. They're not, not happening today, but especially in the first 10 years, you saw a lot of buildings were not doing the full allowed, and, but they still provided affordability. So, every building in downtown Redmond that's been built since 1995 has affordable units in it, regardless of if you use that extra capacity or not. So, that's what this system is sort of doing for you for all of central Issaquah, and not just sort of half, sort of different treatments in different areas. But you have different levels of affordability because of where you were starting from.
Could you go back a second?
Yeah. This one?
Yeah. So, in your code revision options, you don't show the bonus FAR, so, but you just said something, but you're not proposing actually to get rid of the density bonus.
Correct. There's still, when you see the charts, which I think were in some of the slides in your packet, the maximums are still, there's no changes to any of the maximums.
So, so part of this was, and the reason why those numbers on the next page didn't include the density bonuses, because you could do that under the existing code, and you could do it under the revised code, and whatever increment we're going to get, we're going to get probably either way. It's, I think what we're doing now doesn't change a builder's decision to go taller.
Right. Right. Yeah.
And I was just, I was just asking whether or not you were proposing to get rid of the...
No, no. Right.
So, this includes changing the height? Increment, just a small increment. It goes from 48 to 60.
And you do...
25%.
And when you look at the charts, you will see there is maximum heights for the, in other words, you have a base height and a maximum height. So, again, it's the same thing as with the FAR, we're increasing the base height, but we're not increasing any of the maximum heights that are allowed in the areas. This is just increasing, in other words, you have two different height standards in each of these areas as well. You have a base and a max. And so, just like we increased the base FAR, we increased the base height some, but we did not increase the maximum heights.
So, these base increases, are those the...
Upzone.
The upzone that allows us to do this?
Yes.
So, the upzone we did five years ago aged out.
Right. So, you're sort of doing something like what Kirkland did...
Jim was a little bit nervous about just saying, y'all got credit, we're taking advantage of it now.
Right.
That was, our city attorney said, that's, that was too far away.
Right. And the reason why is because you had a voluntary incentive program. So, what you're doing, and Kirkland did something like this too about eight years ago, they flipped a voluntary incentive, because you could take away a voluntary incentive, because that's a bonus, right? And you shifted some of that into sort of base allowed, and you're taking what you would have required under that old provision, which was voluntary, and you're translating it into a mandatory component. That's essentially what you're doing. And Kirkland did something very similar in Totem Lake area. When they went to a mandatory approach, they did different neighborhoods, different ways, and it was dependent on where they had been at that, when they did the shift to mandatory.
So, a couple of thoughts. One is, I probably need to see this again whenever, next, give me a couple of weeks and chew this over, this is a big deal. I do like the fact that we have a policy choice now to actually be inclusionary, which I think is great. I'm trying to picture, you know, the next 10 years and how this works. Part I need more information on is sort of, it's, it's on some housing units in certain areas, but it's not all areas in central Issaquah. I'd kind of like to know what housing it's not covering, in terms of number of units it's not covering. You know, Gateway, the Western Gateway neighborhood is going to probably have, what?
500.
Well, no.
Five, five, five more like...
Well, plus, plus.
Yeah, probably 600 is...
600, 800 units. So, we could have 200 more we're not covering there. So, kind of giving me the picture of, if the city grows in the core, as we hope, you've given us those number of units, give me the number of units it's not applying to.
So, can I ask a clarifying question? So, like with West Gateway, you're only talking about, when Keith said, those two remaining parcels, I assume? Not the ones that are already under construction? Okay?
Yeah. So, kind of, I'm looking for, I, I think it may only work in certain areas, but I want to know what we're not doing, I guess.
So, the thing, so the numbers that I used here, so the 8,500 is the EIS numbers, and there's, it assumes 7185 in the core and 1315 outside the core. So, what I did was, I subtracted out Gateway and Gateway Senior and REVA, and I think I added 50 more to the other two little parcels that are in there. I assume that the area south of Atlas was probably not going to get much, and so the balance of that, that number, the 663 or whatever that number was, I had outside the core, that's the rest, the balance of the 1315. So, but I can give you that breakdown a little bit clearer than just right now.
And this area here, I think this discussion's a lot harder in this area because of what you have there now?
Yeah. And probably another policy consideration that we might have on the comprehensive plan docket is, if we got the lines drawn here right for central Issaquah, there's a, there's a housing stock there now that would be more appropriate for remodel, because it's affordable.
That's one, right, exactly.
So, I'm not so interested in that particular, what the numbers would be there, because I'm not sure that particular piece will stay. But in the rest, just sort of seeing, we have an opportunity, and we could get X number of units at the base, or, you know, X plus number of units at the max, what are the opportunities we're not capitalizing on?
Right. And the other, you know, when we looked here, because of the creek and everything there, those, because of the zoning, you're not really encouraging stuff there. So, we really, that's why we really didn't feel like, we were only leaving out where there was, what looked like limited, much less opportunity. Either because you may not want full bore, or here, because it's essentially almost done, and you don't want it in these areas.
And I think the other thing, Arthur, that I will see with this is that there are certain areas that we have said, we hope they look different in the future, meaning they're office parks. I want to know how many units are there that we think this applies to, because in the back of my mind, eh, it's probably not going to happen. So, I want to know, because that's, that's a bunch of landowners deciding, we want to go from commercial to something else, and they may never decide to do that.
Right.
So, there is an area, though, in the core that we know is changing over, and then I can get my head around what the reality of the number might be.
Let me, can I ask a question or two? Because I'm not sure I'm quite tracking. Now, I'm going to go back to the chart. And I'll first make the observation, you know what's happening in Redmond Town Center now? They're converting back to residential, commercial area. So, that, that was pretty shocking to see that. And so, that, you know, to say it may never happen, who knows? If I think I'm tracking your comment, you have not planned for as much of your overall growth to be in the purple area? And so, are you saying maybe that number might be higher, because there could be shift, or you're worried it may not be so much, because there's so many other uses now already that we may not see as much? And if that's, the latter is your point, I think that's kind of almost what's reflected. If you look at the land, how much land area there is out there, and yet, it's about the same amount of land area, and yet, it's the 10th the number of units. So, you're already assuming not a ton of that going housing at this point. So, are you looking at what if it did?
Not, plus a little bit more. Meaning that I think the central Issaquah area will grow, there'll be a hotspot, and there'll be an outer ring that may or may not happen in 20 years, I don't know. And so, housing that's associated with that...
Right.
...might be included in this number, as you know, if, if everybody went to the base, you'd get X number of units. The reality is, they're office parks now.
Right.
Redevelopment's more likely to occur where there's parking lots now. And so, there's sort of a certainty, we should get a certain amount of stock with this, but it's not equal in every area that's shown currently.
And that's so, I mean, that's a good question. The first big picture comment I would make is, you've gone from that whole area not having a base and up to an FAR of 1.7 and doing zero, to now, at least, if whatever they do there, you will get something all of the time within the base, where you don't have that now, and you witnessed it, right? With the first development that occurred, it was just outside the area of the core. So, that's one way of looking at it. But I can sprinkle you with ideas of changes that, like Crossroads Shopping Center is now going to have more, it's already got one site that's been redeveloped with housing, and there's talk of more, kind of thing. And if you'd asked me that question 15 years ago, would I have picked Town Center and Crossroads as areas where we would see that? I would have guessed other areas before that.
And now, you're hitting on to what I'm saying very closely, is that I really believe the retail areas are going to be the first ones to flip over. But in central Issaquah, we have office park areas.
Right.
And they're also in this number. And the reality is, I'm not sure the office park areas will flip over at the same speed as the others.
That's true. So, I'm going to BMC. Is it BMC?
Mm-hmm.
Right. And I'm going, if you were to ask me, and watch what happened in Gateway, which is not going for full density, going for that ownership middle, that's your 1.7 and less. less. So that's, I think the point I'm trying to make is, what you might see happen there, because you've got some really big parcels that might look like, go up and down Bell Red right now, and look on the west, on the south side of Bell Red, and they are taking little old office park sites and turning them into townhomes, okay? And, but they're not the five-story buildings, they're in ownership in a great location. So if you, if that's a profile I could visualize potentially happening in those areas, and outside the core where there's maybe more pressure not to go for as big a density, and that's again where I would say, this is where the, no matter what you do, you're going to get something. And I would guess, if I had to guess, I would guess something like that. And whether or not it's an office, and what I guess I'm saying is, whether it's an office building or a commercial, I would tend to agree with you, but I've done this business long enough to go, five years from now, I could be totally wrong.
Back to us next time?
Yeah.
With what initially, initial, is it an agenda bill with code?
It is an agenda bill with code.
Fairly quickly, we'll be back to, we'll counsel at the meeting after.
Yes.
That's huge. That's huge.
We don't sleep anymore.
No.
Any questions?
Not really questions, I'm still just trying to absorb it. I'm still just trying to absorb. I need to look, look at these numbers a little bit, so.
Here?
If it was, no, I'm, I'm going to try to find words to describe what I think I'm seeing, and that'll tell me where I am. I do wonder why the, why the acres not matching the core above and below? Oh, because you took out the VMU, okay, I see that.
Yeah, they're edited.
Okay. So if built out to a capacity, we would get, so all of these are at, if it was built, everything was built to capacity? Well, I mean, I look at the number of, in terms of numbers of units.
Uh, yes, based on the EIS.
On the EIS, that doesn't mean necessarily building capacity.
But that's not capacity, that's just the EIS capacity.
Right.
Okay, so it was what we planned.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So there's a balance of 6318 in the core, or, I mean, units, right? You're proposing, so somehow you did some math and you came up with 12%? And for the vertical mixed use, you came up with 15%?
That was by looking at individual projects and seeing what was to get, you know, in a typical project, giving different FARs, what you were giving if you increased the base, and looking at the value of that, and then how much do you afford, how much...
Approach that from a different, yeah, for me, from a developer's perspective.
Yes.
Why, why did you, I'm not sure, it's not clear to me yet on why you went through that exercise, but I think it's because, well, if we push the envelope too much, they just won't do anything.
Or they'll sue us.
Well, they'll sue you because it's mandatory. So, let's go back, let's go back to that slide, and because we were...
Before you leave this, one, one comment about this, just to give you guys some perspective. So 130 units, the VMU, so that's, I mean, so the YWCA is like 150. The 50 units, that's the size of the affordable project up in Talis, or the one Lauren Heights in the Highlands. So, so when you're looking at these numbers, these are, we're like adding like new projects, which I think is, it definitely moves the needle, so.
Okay, and...
So you, so, okay, so this proposal is increase the height, which is the, which is the upzone, that's the bonus to the landowner, and then you're converting that into some number, at different affordability levels, below market rate, and that's why you have options in there. You're converting that extra value into some number of affordable units.
When we come to you with the MFTE program, the multifamily tax exemption program, we have a chart, I think we do there, that does the same kind of analysis, but what we're doing is we're saying, what's the value of that land bonus, that's sort of the increased capacity?
Right.
And then we're looking at, what's the reduced rent? And we're, we're doing a cap rate value on that. So we're doing a present value on that lost rent over time, and we're comparing it to the increased land value. And we're trying to have it be at least, the incentive is a little great, equal or greater than what you're asking for, because if not, then you're now in potential trouble with the state legislature, you know, the, the legal courts over the years, et cetera, takings and that kind of stuff, okay? And what, and you can thank Arch Cities and Redmond in particular, this was not in the original bill. It was because when they were drafting that bill eight years ago, 10 years ago, Seattle was just, their attorneys wouldn't let them do what you're doing now, the voluntary. And they needed legislation to get past their attorneys. We showed up and said, whoa, 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 we've got Redmond with mandatory, and your attorney now worked with us and all the housing advocates and the builders to get this put into the legislation, which is what's now, so it helps stabilize in why we've been able to do the kind of work we're proposing here. So, that, but that's the juggling act, and trust me, attorneys are constantly saying, have you, are you within the limits? So that's what we were trying to do for you. And some might argue our math.
Yeah, actually, this is a complicated subject, you did a very good job explaining it.
Well, thank you.
I haven't looked at it.
That's a handout from Arthur.
That's a handout, so we just wanted you to be able to see the rent levels at the different affordability levels, and we also, at the bottom of the chart, show you what your rents are at for old buildings and new buildings, and we also show you what your salary profile is in your town, so that you can see what kind of jobs and incomes your workforce makes. So that's, that's just sort of a little handy tandy if you wanted to translate numbers up there to real world.
Totally do.
So, okay, thank you, I'm going to ask you another question about this when we're done.
For sure?
Right now. So when you look at, when you try to depict, well, how do you know what the affordability of, these are just the units within Isiqua that you're tracking?
I'm sorry. No, this chart is what, the chart there is showing you what the rent levels would be at the different percent of median, and then at the bottom, it's overall, it's overall market.
Okay, so it's, it's the entire...
It's the entire city.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. That answered my question.
Yeah.
Where did Stacy say, where's yours? It's only 9:30, but, oh my gosh, you've been here for a long time.